Town Council, May 18 regular meeting to order. And I thank you all for being so quiet out there. I'm starting a few minutes late. I was trying to get myself organized slightly. As you will note, we still have some distancing in our seating. That's a matter we'll take up tonight since some of those restrictions have been lifted. But for now, we, and if there's those who need a seat, there is some overflow, but I think we should be able to accommodate everybody out here. And we're not formally requiring masks tonight, but we respect those of you who are wearing masks. And if you come to the podium to speak, we would probably ask you to, if you want to take off your mask at that time. Okay, I'm going to begin our meeting this evening by calling our meeting to order, and I'll ask our town clerk, if she will, to call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn.
Present.
Mayor Proton Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dillinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
And Councilmember Vance.
Here. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. As is our process, we would ask any of you, and all of you, if you can stand to do so and join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Also, we begin our meetings with an invocation, and it's my privilege this evening to recognize a gentleman that perhaps is known to many of you, he's certainly known to me, Reverend Travis Tobin, who is the pastor of the First Baptist Church here in Garner, has been for a number of years. I meant to ask him how many years, maybe he can say, but for a long time. So Reverend Tobin, we really appreciate you being here, and if you will at this time, sir, please lead us in our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor, let's pray together. Father, we pause this evening and acknowledge the fact that you are Almighty God, in that we recognize that all authority comes from you. And Father, in your wisdom, you have established the institution of family, the institution of church, and the institution of government. And Father, for each of those, you have delegated your authority to be used wisely, in a way that is beneficial and helpful, Lord, to each of those that make up these institutions of family, church, and government. Tonight, our focus is upon that third institution of government. So Father, I pray this evening, Lord, for those who serve our community through this institution that have been given authority from you, that you would grant them wisdom beyond their own natural ability to use it in such a way that is beneficial and helpful, Lord, to those who make up our community. Lord, I pray for our law enforcement, I thank you for them. Lord, I pray that as they serve, Lord, that you'll go before them and provide provision and protection, Lord, that they will recognize the authority in which they possess has been granted by you, and they will use it in such a way that pleases and honors you, a way that is helpful and beneficial. And I thank you for each one that serves so faithfully in this way. Lord, I thank you for our elected officials and for those that are represented here this evening. Lord, as they make themselves available as servants to this community, I pray as they deliberate, as they receive information, Lord, as they make decisions, that you would grant them wisdom beyond their own natural ability to serve in a way in which you intend that, Lord, it would be for the well-being of the citizens, for their good and for their safety. And Father, I thank you most of all that you are a God who is redemptive, a God who restores, a restoration that we're all in need of. And I thank you for the provision that you have made through the finished work of your Son and our Redeemer, the Lord Jesus Christ, upon the cross. Father, may we humble ourselves, even this evening, and acknowledge that you are Almighty God, and that your Son, the Lord Jesus Christ, is Redeemer of all who will humble themselves and give place to you in their life. Blessed this time, we pray, in the precious name of Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Reverend Tobin, we appreciate you coming out, taking time tonight then to lead us. So again, thank you, sir. Okay, following our agenda, those of you who've been with us before understand and know that we begin our meetings with some, a segment called petitions and comments. And I'll just read to you a little introduction in regards to that. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included on the agenda. Interested parties may appear, can choose to appear live on the virtual meeting platform, I believe we're still doing that, yeah, or provide written comments that we share with the council. The council is interested in hearing your concerns but may not, may not take action or deliberate on subject matter, on the subject matter brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for future agendas. And I would remind those of you who are here this evening to speak that we seek to limit the time to three to five minutes, that's to accommodate everybody's time and to be courteous to one another. So I would ask our speakers to adhere to that as closely as possible. It is my understanding that this evening, we have at least two persons who have signed up in advance of the meeting. Madam Clerk, I think I may have misplaced the name of the first individual, it may be here somewhere, but I couldn't find, I believe it's a Ms. Johnson, am I right on that?
It's Reese Johnson.
I'm sorry, yeah, okay, it's Reese Johnson. Okay, I will recognize you first, and then we have, I believe, another person who will follow you, and then we'll see if there are others in the audience who may desire to speak. So Ms. Johnson, if you would come forward to that podium right there, state your name and address if you don't mind, and you can feel free to speak.
Sure thing, good evening to the town of Garner. I'm Reese Johnson, my address is 118 Caustic Circle, Garner, NC, 27529, in the Vandoor Pines Community.
Okay. Okay, you may proceed.
So on tonight, many of you have probably been made aware via media outlets that we had a very vicious attack in our neighborhood on April 27. The Vandoor Pines Community has been robbed forever. I've lived in this community now for 17 years, and these dogs are dogs that were not known to be as vicious as they were, but there have been now a time where we need to make sure we have action. The neighborhood has been made aware that the dog owners who currently live in the neighborhood have requested a permit for dangerous animal, which is against the current covenants that we have. So on tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of our neighborhood, we have neighbors that are here with me on tonight, as well as many that are watching via your Microsoft Teams. So I'm just going to provide to you some of the commentary that we as board members, which I am currently one of the board members, have received. So as I just mentioned, we had a vicious dog attack, and the neighborhood is very, very concerned, there are a few things that they want to make sure you guys as a board are aware of. The dog has killed one of our jewels, Jaden. Jaden played with many of the children that currently reside in the neighborhood. This will forever be something that's stapled in their minds. It will cause undue stress to them to have these dogs brought back to the neighborhood, which is the current request of the owners. And so at this time, we're asking that you reject this permit request, given the nature of the incident and the fact that we've lost one of our children, her mother Heather is still severely injured from bites sustained by the dogs as well. The dogs would be across the street, so some of you may not be aware, but the dogs would be across the street from the home who has already experienced the loss and trauma of this attack, because there's only a street between these two properties. Children in our neighborhood are still currently dealing with this, as they're asking questions about when Jaden will be returning home, to which their parents are having to feel. Even under the best circumstances, dogs can escape, so despite all the structures that the homeowners are now wanting to put in place, it still will have an emotional distress and undue anxiety for the community as a whole to hear the dogs bark or have them be seen in the neighborhood. As homeowners at Vandoor Pines, we do have our covenants which stipulate that we're not to have any vicious animals. So requesting a permit for a dangerous animal will be in a restriction that is currently addressed in our covenants. So finally, I would just like to note on behalf of our community, regardless of the safety features, to bring animals back into a neighborhood with dozens of kids, to whom I've already mentioned have played with Jaden, many of whom know her very well or knew her very well, and many of whom were in the vicinity when the dogs attacked and killed her. There are no safety measures allowed by the HOA or otherwise that make these children feel at home, that these dogs killed their friend while they're barking in the back, in the back of a fence. At the current time, we would just ask that you reject the proposal for the permit, and I know that's something that would have to be taken up at a later time, but I also want you to hear from Blake DeCillo, who was the first responder who had to deal with this in real time, as he can provide you commentary that you probably have not already seen or witnessed in the news media. We appreciate your time to have this brought before you on tonight, and should you have any further questions, you can certainly reach out to the HOA of the Vandoor Pines Community. Again, my name is Patrice Johnson, and it's a pleasure to present this information to you on this evening.
Just as you're leaving, I know some of you raised your hand, so at this time, those of you who are here from the neighborhood or in conjunction with this tragic, tragic incident, if you will, just raise your hand so we'll know who you are. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are ready for you, sir, I believe, and let me see, I do have, is it Blake?
Yes, sir.
Pronounce your last name for me.
DeCillo.
DeCillo, okay, thank you, sir. And you live at 181 Roan Drive?
151, sir.
Excuse me, 151, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, yes, and again, we'll ask you to be sensitive to the timeframe.
Absolutely.
But go right ahead, sir.
Again, I live at 151 Roan Drive, and I just wanted to give a little bit of insight of what I saw on that afternoon. I've been a Raleigh police officer for 15 years now, I'm on a specialized unit that deals with some pretty serious stuff on a daily basis. That day will change me forever. I did not see two dogs defending their property, that's not what I saw. I saw two dogs viciously attacking and mauling two unconscious people, okay? The little girl was face down, but she was completely unconscious. The mother was completely 100% incapacitated and unconscious. Those dogs were not defending their property, they were viciously attacking and mauling two defenseless people. I won't get any more graphic details, but I can assure you, nobody should ever have to see what I saw, and I stand unequivocally with this community. I've been told several times that if it wasn't for me arriving on scene when I did, first one to come through the gate, that Heather would not be here. This is not a gold star on me, this is me telling you that I live in this community, I live directly across the street, I see children playing at that intersection daily, and that's the main reason why I wanted to live there. It's an awesome, beautiful community. Please listen to what I have to say, and tell you that in 15 years, I've never seen anything like I've ever seen on that afternoon, and I've been through some very serious stuff. So again, thank you for the time, I just wanted you to know that this was not a defenseless act by two dogs. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much as well. Okay, when an event like this occurs, we appreciate a neighborhood like yours designated, designating a speaker saves time, and, but if there are others here who want to speak, either to give further explanation, and I think we've had a full explanation here, but would give that, and then we'll move, of course, to other petitions and comments for If, if no one came for that purpose, and I know all of you came in support of these two speakers, I believe I'll ask Ms. Jones if she'll just give a brief overview of the, sort of the process that we have to go through in regards to this circumstance, and I can assure you that the town and its attorney and others will be very diligent in pursuing this matter. Things don't always happen as quickly as maybe you'd like to see, but Ms. Jones, do you mind just giving us a little overview of the process we're going through?
Certainly. On behalf of the mayor and council and the manager and staff, we acknowledge that not only the members of the public who are here, but many members of the public have expressed their concerns about the dangerous dog permits to town council, the mayor, the managers and staff, and we are fully aware of those concerns. To explain the role of town council at this time, in adopting Chapter Three, the Animal Control Ordinance for the town of Garner, the town council has delegated the responsibility for determining whether certain dogs are dangerous animals, and for reviewing and approving dangerous animal permits to the animal control officer. Ultimately, the decision on the permit will rest with the Garner Police Department and the Garner Police Chief. They will make, the review process for these permits has not been completed at this time, but once that decision is made, those persons who are grieved by either the approval or denial of the permits may exercise their rights at that time. This may take the form of an administrative appeal to the town's appeal board, or this may take the form of a temporary restraining order or injunction issued by a judge. So at this time, there has not been a decision on the dangerous dog permit applications that have been submitted that will come in the, at some point in the future, there is no deadline for reviewing those, so the police chief and the police department are gathering information and verifying the information that's been provided.
Okay, thank you very much. Were others here to speak to any other issue that need to be, okay, we don't have any, Madam Clerk, okay, thank you very much. So I hope you understand fully that there is a process that we are following closely, we have to, to do that as part of our ordinance, as part of state general statutes, and we certainly will do that and pursue that to its end result, and we hope to have, we hope to have those decisions made in a reasonable time, and certainly those will be publicized and made available to the public. Okay, anything else, Mr. Manager, is you're aware of, okay? I will try to speak for the council at this time, I just say that we, we mourn with the family, and for you as a neighborhood, I used to live pretty close to your neighborhood over in Tiffany Woods, which is just up the road from there, and I drove out to the area there and looked around the area, so it's a lovely neighborhood, and I know in time you will, you will do what you have to do to move along and get over this, but thank you for your interest and your time, and rest assured, we will, we will do what we have indicated here, okay? If you want to stick around for some rest of the meeting, we will move on to other matters at this time, but if you need to leave, now is the time, you could do that if you want to. Again, thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, I think we can move on while they are exiting the council chambers. Our next order of business for the council is the adoption of the agenda, and before I ask you to approve that, we should note that there is one item that the manager, I think, made you aware of, it's a resolution having to do with, I believe, ARP funds, you should have received something on that, so that's another agenda item. And then, Mr. Manager, let's see, under the closed session, I believe we are adding an item there, is that correct?
Closed session for economic development.
Okay, so that's the other, are there any other corrections or changes that you're aware of, Mr. Manager?
I'm not, are you keeping the real estate closed session?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's it.
It'll be brief.
Okay, and council, before you vote, does anybody wish to pull an item from the consent agenda for further consideration? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, you mean the adoption of the agenda.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, yeah, you're exactly right, I was looking at consent, yeah, we are on the regular agenda. So, Mr. Matthews, that's, yeah, thank you.
That's, yes.
And I believe it was seconded by Mr. Vance, okay? Motion properly made and seconded. If you favor adoption of the agenda, council, please vote aye.
Aye.
If you vote, if you disapprove, you can vote no. Okay, thank you very much. I'm not aware, Madam Clerk, of any presentations at this time.
No, sir, I'm not aware of any.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, we will, we will consider and go to the consent agenda, there are two items there. I am told that there is one slight correction, I believe, on item one down at the end where it talks about adopt resolution 2021, and that is 2446, is that right, Mr. Man?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to note that change. So council, will entertain a motion for adoption of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Socket.
Okay, motion made, properly seconded, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and there is none, okay. And by the way, I think we included the change for the closed session, okay, thank you. Okay, we will now go into the segment of our agenda, which is called Public Hearings. Again, read some prefacing information here, interested parties can participate in public hearings by either appearing in person or through the virtual meeting platform, we've been doing that for some time, and that's something probably council will talk about tonight, we're moving more and more to in-person presentations, and so council may only receive comments in the, excuse me, I'm sorry, that's for quasi judicial hearing, so at this time, I will recognize, I believe, and open the first public hearing, let's see, Mr. Banford, you are up, is that correct, sir? Open the public meeting in regards to ANX 2104 Harper's Landing. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council, this is an annexation petition, this is case number 21-04, and this is a vicinity map of the annexation area outlined in red, and also the right-of-way area shaded in green. This is the Harper's Landing subdivision, and this project was approved on September the 4th, 2018, for 87 single-family lots, and they have moved forward to record plats and lots for construction, and the annexation petition is a requirement, it was a condition of approval. The site is approximately 38.55 acres, zoning is R9 conditional use, and it's located off of Clifford Road. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Banford. Council, questions and/or comments, I'll start with Mr. Vance on this end.
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Dillinger?
No questions.
Okay, Ms. Behringer?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Okay, none whatsoever, okay. Are we expecting anyone else to speak on this matter that you're aware of?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if there's anyone here to do that, now would be the proper time to make your wishes known, okay? So, all right, I believe I can close the public hearing, which I will do, and call for a motion from council in regards to adopting ordinance 2021-5032.
So moved.
Socket.
Okay, motion's been properly made and seconded, any other discussion, hearing none. If you favor the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
And there is no opposition, I believe, so it is so ordered, and I thank you, Mr. Banford. I believe you're still up, sir, we have another public hearing, this is CZ 2103, location is 1419 Aversborough Road, and so I will open this public hearing, recognize Mr. Banford. Oh, excuse me, I wasn't looking up.
Switched on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight, we're going to present conditional zoning request CZ 21-03 for 1419 Aversborough Road. General case information, the applicant is Ball Rentals and Carol Douglas Ball, the owner is Feral Property Management LLC, location is 1419 Aversborough Road, and the tract size is .44 acres. Background and request, we have an aerial photo of the property outlined in red. Here's a street view of the location. Adjacent zoning and land use, as you can see, most of the properties that are, that are, well, all the properties that are adjacent to this location are Zone MF2. To the north is a vacant lot, to the south is a church, to the west is a multifamily Georgetown Manor, and to the east is land is at Heather Park. Zoning history, there have been a few rezoning cases in the past that range from 1986 to 2018, CUDZ 1801 Ball Rentals was the most recent. Existence zoning summary, office and institutional conditional use, permits office clerical research and services, some examples are attorney's office, dentist's office, physicians, et The applicant has proposed conditional use, a conditional zoning MF2 C243, which entails household living, daycare, and healthcare. And as you can see to the right, have some two-family dwelling, townhomes, condominiums, and so forth. The reason for the request is that the applicant was recent, well, in 2018, was approved for 26 apartment units, 26 apartment units called the Lofts at Aversborough, and he has indicated a desire to possibly take the lot that's up for rezoning and combine that with the, to modify the existing approval, and combine that and add additional units. Overall neighborhood character, in this area, you will find is developed to the mixed uses, including townhomes, church, educational facility, offices, restaurants, and commercial retail. On March 25th of this year, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting and with six neighboring property owners in attendance. Transportation, we have provided you with transportation data spanning from 2019 to, I'm sorry, 2009 up until 2019 in two-year increments, and you can see the numbers on a daily basis, average daily traffic count. Conditional rezoning, next steps, when considering a rezoning request, the planning commission is required by state statute to make a written recommendation regarding the consistency of the zoning proposal with the town's current comprehensive plan and other applicable adopted plans. These plans include a 2018 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, as well as a Swift Creek Land Management Plan. Reasonableness, in addition to approving a statement regarding plan consistency upon the advice of the planning commission- the advice of the planning commission, the town council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. Sources of reasonableness may include other sections of the 2018 Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, providing guidance on keeping the town's character, living spaces, working places, recreation opportunities, and transportation. Other adopted plans and policies providing guidance on parks, greenways, cultural resources, and more may serve as sources as well. The recommendation, staff recommends that once the town council has heard comments, concerns, and questions from the general public, that conditional zoning request CZ 2103 be referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation regarding the request consistency. Are there any questions for me or staff at this time?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowie, and I'll just sort of ask that as a general question, rather than go around the horn, counsel, have questions for Mr. Bowie? Anybody?
Just a quick question, what's the status of the construction on the loss right now? I know it started.
Yes.
Is, has there been any type of indication to staff on how this property would potentially be integrated, or is that to be determined upon rezoning?
I think it would have to be determined upon the rezoning.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from counsel? Thank you, Mr. Dallinger. Okay, Mr. Bowie, I believe that is all for you, are there other persons here who expected to testify on this matter? Yeah, Mr. Roberts. Please state your name and address, sir.
This is counsel Keith Roberts, 202 Bonica Creek Drive in Garner, representing Douglas Ball, the owner tonight, who sends his regrets, but he had a, had a conflict, and would appreciate your support on this matter this evening, and if I can speak for Douglas, I would say that basically, I think this is more about aesthetics than anything, you know, currently under the, the approved, current approved site plan, the apartments were tucked back in behind this existing older office building, and basically, this gives the ability to get rid of the office building, to have better street visibility, and as far as the units go, it doesn't gain a whole lot as far as density, I think the old site plan was approved at 26, by adding this additional parcel, that 26 can be increased to 32, so basically, a pickup of only six units by going through this, this exercise, but aesthetically, we all believe it would just make a tremendous difference to the, to the look at the project. And I'm here for any questions.
Okay, counsel, only questions for Mr. Roberts? Anybody? Anybody?
Questions.
Okay, seems like you get off easy tonight, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Okay, are there others here on this matter that wish to speak at this time? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close that public hearing, and I believe, counsel, you're asked to vote to have this matter referred to the planning commission for review and further recommendation regarding plan consistency, I guess we have to vote on that, do we? Or, maybe we do.
Yes, you should take the vote on that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that CZ 2103 be referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation regarding planning consistency.
Okay, you've heard the motion properly made and seconded by Ms. Behringer, any questions on counsel's part, or we'll vote, if you approve the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, please vote no. And the motion passes, so that will be referred to the planning commission as noted. Okay, the next item is item three, that's a conditional rezoning, Auburn Station, and it is Mr. Banford this time, right? Okay, so recognize you, sir, for your presentation, I'll open the public hearing at this time.
Good evening, Mayor and members of counsel, this is a conditional use zoning request, this is case number CZ PD 21-01. The property is located at the northeast corner of East Corner Road and Auburn Nightdale Road. The public hearing's tonight, and if this moves forward tonight, this would, is tentatively scheduled for the planning commission meeting on June the 14th. This is a boundary of the rezoning site outlined in orange. You have East Corner Road to the south, so the property does have road frontage along East Corner Road, it has quite a bit of road frontage along Auburn Nightdale Road, Highway 70 is a little farther to the south, and the predominant land use in this area is single-family and agricultural uses. This is a Google Street View looking west on East Corner Road with the rezoning and project site located here on the north, northwest corner of Auburn Nightdale and East Corner This map shows the zoning, the current zoning in this area of Garner. The property is zoned multi-residential one, which is an obsolete zoning district, this district allows single-family duplexes, triplexes, it does not allow apartments. This zoning, this MR1 zoning, is also to the west on some farmland, to the north, we have R20 zoning, which is single-family, to the northeast, we have planned residential zoning for the Auburn Village community, directly to the east, on the east side of Auburn Nightdale Road, we have single-family zone R20, and to the, to the south, we have R20, single-family, and a little farther south, we do have some commercial zoning at the corner where the golf driving range was, and Highway 70 is located a little farther south. The predominant zoning in this area is residential. This area of Garner does have some zoning cases, the oldest case we have on file is from 1993, this was a zoning case out on Highway 70, the more recent cases were from 2016, 2017, and 2019. Garner did take in some additional land into our zoning jurisdiction in 2017, this was the zoning case here, Z17-01. There was a zoning case a little farther east of this intersection in 2019, and there was also another case in 2019 that was approved, this was a general use zoning case at the northeast corner of East Corner Road and Auburn Nightdale Road, and that property was rezoned from R20 to neighborhood business, so that's the, the old country store that was at the corner. The existing zoning is multi-residential one, this is an obsolete zoning district, which means it is mapped, but there will be no new re-zonings to that district, so any areas that are zoned MR1 can be developed under the, under the standards in Article 4.14B, and the use is permissible in the current zoning is single-family detached duplexes, triplexes, and zero lot line attached units. The proposed zoning is planned residential conditional District 13, and under this proposal, the applicant has proposed some use conditions, and also some conditions that would apply to the development. First are the use conditions, and the use will be limited and restricted to single-family detached only. Other conditions are proposed, the maximum density shall not exceed 2.6 dwelling units per acre, with a maximum of 174 dwelling units. An HOA will be established, they are requesting some deviations for lots to be a minimum of 5,500 square feet. They're also requesting some deviations from the setbacks, and those, the column on the left shows what the current standards are for R12, and that's what you use as a starting point under the PRD zone to ask for deviations, and they are asking for 20-foot front yard setbacks, which is a 33% deviation, 15-foot rear yard, which is a 25%, 5-foot minimum, 10-foot combined, and a corner side yard of 10 feet request, and that's a 50% deviation. Moving on to other conditions, the main amenity shall be, shall begin construction upon receiving the first certificate of occupancy on the model homes in Phase One, and shall be completed within 18 months. The pool shall be a minimum of 2,000 square feet, and the cabana shall be a minimum of 1,775 square feet. All single-family homes shall have at least a two-car garage. All housing types shall be a minimum of .045 gauge vinyl siding, if masonry is not the predominant first-floor finish, then front elevations shall have two types of vinyl siding, for example, lap and shake, or board and batten. Number nine, at a minimum, all homes shall have at least 24-inch stone masonry water table along the front facade. Ten, all slab foundations with an exposed height of greater than 12 inches shall be finished with masonry product. Number 11, garage doors shall have carriage door hardware and windows. Twelve, elevations with candle lever, front elevation accent, shall have decorative brackets or shelf supports for single-family homes. Thirteen, all homes shall have a minimum 8-inch eaves on the front and rear facade, with a minimum 8-inch roof overhang on all sides. Fourteen, an outdoor deck or patio, a minimum of 64 square feet, is required as part of all dwelling units. Covered front porch, minimum 20 square feet is required. Sixteen, all dwelling units shall have at least one window on each side elevation. Seventeen, benches and trash receptacles are required in all amenity areas. Eighteen, at the cost of the developer, a gateway feature shall be constructed and have visibility at the intersection of East Corner Road and Auburn Nightdale Road, this will be located outside of public rights away and shall conform to all building codes. The gateway feature will be approximately scaled to the site and the surrounding properties, and will utilize design elements derived from the historical context of the Auburn community. To ensure, to ensure such historical context occurs, the Garner Historical Society shall be consulted during the design process. Prior to approval of the preliminary subdivision plan, detailed design specifications shall be submitted to the Department of Planning for review and approval. The gateway feature shall be constructed and installed prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy for the 50th dwelling unit. Unit information, we covered this at the beginning of the presentation, the predominant land use is residential, Auburn Village neighborhood, which is located northeast of this site, was approved for 379 homes. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held on April the 15th of 2021, staff identified approximately 59 property owners within the notification radius, and approximately 22 property owners were in attendance, and some of these were from outside of the notification area, so these were not highlighted on the notification list in your staff report. I'll stop there for transportation.
Good evening.
The TIA, in this case, the thresholds were not triggered for that, this did approximately, looking at 920 trips per day, with 62 a.m. peak trips and 74 p.m. peak trips, all NC DOT encroachments and driveway permits will still be required, of course, and NC DOT requirements for road improvements will be incorporated into the preliminary plans and the construction drawings that will be reviewed later. There you have historical daily average counts along East Corner Road and Auburn Nightdale Road between 2009 and 2019. The UDO requires a minimum of two points of access, in this case, there is one ingress-egress point along Auburn Nightdale Road and one along East Corner Road. The transportation plan requires a stub to the north, which is shown on the master plan. The transportation plan also requires widening of East Corner Road and Auburn Nightdale Roads, which will be half of their future full width, and fire inspections has preliminarily approved the road access and road network as well. The master plan proposal, which would be a condition of this rezoning request, again, it's 66.67 acres, not to exceed 174 units total, they do have three product types outlined in their PRD book, each of those product types you see there has a minimum lot width, as well as a minimum square footage for the homes, they do have a range on, of number of units on each of those product types, since the preliminary subdivision plan has not been completed at this time, however, again, it would not exceed 174 units total. All of the setbacks are the same for all three unit types that you see there, 20 in the front, 15 in the rear, 5-foot on the side, and 10 feet on the corner. This is the master plan that you see there with the various product types color-coded in the tan, gray, and yellow, I would call those colors, with A, B, and C types as well, and you see coming in from East Garner, that you would come directly into their main amenity area, which is that green area. For tree canopy, there is a minimum of 12% required, and they have committed to preserving 12%, plus other canopy that will be established as part of street trees or other landscaping that will be included in their open space or amenity areas. For perimeter buffers, there are none required at this stage, we will recheck those, of course, at subsequent stages of review when the preliminary subdivision comes in, and they are committed to retaining the maximum vegetation possible within the perimeter setback that is required as part of a PRD. The street trees will be provided every 40 feet along all roadways. For open space, there is a For open space, there is a required 25% for a PRD, and they have committed to a minimum of 25.5%. Open space will be made up of environmentally sensitive areas as well as active and passive recreation areas. And there is a pedestrian circulation system that connects open spaces in a network with an emphasis on trails and side paths. There is no FEMA-designated floodplain on the site, but the site is impacted by riparian buffers along streams, and those are shown on the master plan as well. Water and sewer service will be provided by City of Raleigh with an eight-inch water line in East Garner Road. New water and sewer infrastructure is at Auburn Village, and that will be extended down to this development. At the preliminary plat review time, we will look further into other elements that are required by the UDO, including lighting for streets and common areas. They'll have to meet the UDO regulations, as well as stormwater devices and water lines and hydrant spacings that are required to meet the Garner Fire and Raleigh Water rules and regulations. The next steps for the rezoning.
So if this moves forward tonight, this will go to the planning commission. And the planning commission is required by state statute to make a written recommendation regarding the consistency of the zoning proposal with the town's current adopted plans and policies. And this includes the Garner Forward Future Land Use Plan, also the Transportation Plan, and the Parks Recreation Greenways and Cultural Resources Master Plan. When this comes back to council for action, the council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. And that concludes our presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Okay. Thank you both for teaming up to make a good presentation. Council will now open it up for questions or comments at this time, starting Mr. Matthews.
Yes, I understand.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Sperring, Mr. Dellinger?
Yes.
Okay.
It, the request is to move from the MRO1. What is the typical density of an MRO1 zoning district?
I do not know off the top of my head, but it does, it does allow some multifamily uses, including duplexes and triplexes and attached units.
Do it imply a higher density?
It would be higher density than like an R9 zone.
My other question relates to, how far is this from 540?
On this map, the intersection of Auburn Nightdale Road and Highway 70 is located here. This is probably about an eighth of a mile. And 540 is going to cross 70, maybe about another quarter of a mile east of this site.
Pretty close.
Or east of that intersection.
My other question is, how far is this from the rail line that goes out that direction along the proposed path for commuter rail?
How far is it from that location?
From the rail line, from the, from the rail line itself?
I don't know the exact distance. I would say the, the rail line is located here on this map. And on our Garner Forward plan, we do have an opportunity site where we show a possible commuter rail site in this area. The distance is probably within maybe 1,000 feet or so is my estimate.
Your professional opinion, does it make sense to have this low a density that close to a potential rail site?
I mean, that's something that the council can consider. It's, I don't have any opinion on that.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. This is the kind of stuff that comes before us that flies in the face of, of smart growth and planning properly for the future when it comes to high density along our transit corridors. That's a big red flag, along with all these setbacks, reductions. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, I have a question. It, it pertains to the, the stormwater. Stormwater devices that will be used. I know in the last one, in the development just north of this one, there was, there were an issue with the stormwater runoff that was providing sediment within the ponds in the area. Are we farther, farther along enough in the planning process to know what type of erosion control or stormwater devices will be in place? And will those devices suffice to protect those ponds and area?
I don't have that information. I'll see if Stacy wants to comment.
We are not yet far enough along in the process. The preliminary subdivision plan will come back in, and that's when the engineering department will take an in-depth look at that and the, all the stormwater calculations that go with it. But, but we are not there yet. No, sir.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other council members? Okay, is the applicant wishing to, to make a presentation? You don't have to, but, yeah, okay. Should I have these people sworn, Mr. Jones?
No, this is not a quasi-judicial proceeding.
Excuse me. Thank you. Yes, name and address, please.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Laura Holloman. I'm with McAdams Company. I'm the project planner for Auburn Station. My address is 2905 Maridian Parkway, Durham, 27713. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and it's wonderful to be in person in the beautiful Garner Town Hall. So great to be at this step tonight, finally. As staff presented to you, and want to thank staff for the wonderful job they did for a very thorough presentation, I initially thought that I was gonna present more than, but I think they did such a wonderful job that I'll, I'll try to not duplicate efforts here. But as staff certainly presented to you, the request before you tonight is to rezone approximately 66 acres located near the intersection of East Garner Road and Auburn Nightdale Road. Their request is for an age-restricted, single-family detached-only subdivision with a maximum of 174 units, which equates to approximately 2.6 units per acre. The proposed land use plan that you see on the screen shows two access points, one on East Garner Road and one on Auburn Nightdale Road. And in the green there, you see tree conservation areas and other general open space areas, which have been situated along the perimeter of the property to the greatest extent, extent allowed, to allow for those app transition areas for adjacent, uh, single-family residential and other residential areas. Next slide. The vision of Auburn Station is to allow for a mix of single-family product types. These proposed products will be ranch homes with emphasis on main-floor living to allow for homeowners to age in place. The Wake County has, in recent years, and is no different, there's a tremendous need for older, age-restricted homes in the community. I know that it seems like with, with Auburn Village, you know, we, we seem to be getting an influx of these as of late, but really, it's, it's been a long time coming, and these, and these developments are, are very much a drop in the bucket. When I think of all the rapid growth that, that Garner and its neighbors have experienced in recent years, that's brought a lot of young families to the community, and a lot of grandparents want to be near those young families and see their grandkids. And so these, these products are starting, starting to be more and more successful. But they've, they've done so to really propose a wide variety of, of architectural guidelines which speak to high-quality assurances. Next slide. Minimum front cover porches, outdoor patios or decks, mix of building materials, including cultural and natural stone, wood and hardy plank siding. And this really speaks to, excuse me, minimum roof, roof eaves and things of that nature. Having, of course, we know that, that slab foundations are only allowed for age-restricted communities, but again, having that appearance of that, of that water table so that it doesn't appear just to be that bare, that bare slab foundation. These are all assurances that we've made to ensure that there's high-quality communities in Garner to continue to create quality housing stock in the community. Next slide. This is the opens, overall open space plan, showing areas of developed open spaces as well as proposed trail networks throughout the community. And this is something that is really an emphasis on communities that the proposed developer, Toll Brothers, does. This is their first foray into the community, and before stealing the thunder of, of, of the representative, which you'll hear from in just, in just a minute, you know, this is something that they're very excited about in the community because this is unlike a community that they have done before. Next slide. So what does this translate to? You know, we, we see green, green spaces on a, on a master plan, but what does that really mean? This is, um, this is an example of one of their communities in the Triangle. It's called the Regency at White Oak, right there at the, near Green Hill High School, at there at the Apex Carry Line. And this is, I went out there on a, on a Wednesday morning, right before the, the trees came, so it was chilly. But I can tell you that, that the, these folks really use the amenities. The chilly did not bother, the chilliness in the air did not certainly bother the folks out there enjoying the pickleball court as well as the, the bocce ball. And there's also emphasis on outdoor grilling stations and pocket parks, like you see in the lower right-hand corner throughout the community, to really, to really give a sense of social interaction. You know, these folks, you know, they, they're in a different stage in their life. They want to get to know their neighbors. They want to have social interactions and opportunities throughout the development. This is what it's all about. For, for once, you know, their, their kids have grown, they've, they've, they've moved on, so they, they've decided to, to downsize and really put the emphasis on, on enjoying that time in their life that I can only dream about. But it's, it's something that they certainly, they certainly have, have done, and Toll Brothers puts an, an emphasis on that as well. The proposed zoning conditions that speak to that is, uh, Steph did a great job of mentioning that earlier with talking about that all areas are gonna have the benches and trash receptacles, like you see here. There's also, you know, providing a, a pool and clubhouse and, excuse me, and cabana and committing to that. Also sports courts, which as you see, and the pickleball is a very successful amenity and things that, that folks certainly enjoy and suspect will, this community will be no different. Next slide. This is something that I, I really wanted to share and hopeful that we'll get there again. This is an example of their social calendar and, and Toll Brothers community. So they have, they have ladies lunch brunches, they have bingo night, they have ice cream sociaus, they have trivia night, they have, this is a, they have a, this was in May, so they had their annual Memorial Day cookout. And every community has a, has a lifestyle director onsite to really showcase and, and really encourage these types of things and, and yoga. And this is something that, that really is, is exactly what you want in your community. You know, you, you hear so much developers come in and they say, oh, yeah, we want a, we want a sense of place. Well, what does that look like? Well, these, this is exactly what that looks like. This is really, this is really folks not wanting to just lock and leave, but really stay and see, and see what their community is all about and really want to be involved and be a part of Garner. So with that, I will introduce Jeff Westmoreland with Toll Brothers to introduce himself. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jeff Westmoreland. I'm the land entitlements manager for Toll Brothers. Our address is 900 Perimeter Park Drive in Morrisville. I want to echo a few things that Laura said and try to talk a little bit about what Toll Brothers stands for. We are excited to be talking about a project in Garner. We're excited to be here in Garner. There's a little sense of normalcy of coming to a meeting like this. Seems like we're, we're all getting past, you know, the last 15 months or so, so it's good to, to be out talking about projects like this. But Toll Brothers started a little over 50 years ago, and in that time, we have tried to live up to our brand of America's luxury home builder. We're very proud of that moniker. It's something that we transfer to, you know, all of our communities that we're working on. We've been in North Carolina since the mid-'90s. Currently, we're working in, on projects in over 300 communities across 24 states and 50 markets, primarily through the Sun Belt and along both the east and west coast. We're the fourth-largest home builder by revenues, and you can see some of the other accolades there that we're, we're proud of, that we've been recognized as, as a leader in our industry. I myself am born and raised here in North Carolina. Like a lot of folks, I, I moved to the Triangle. I'll date myself a little bit, back in the '80s to come to college here and, and stayed. And I stayed here because of all the reasons that everyone in this room is here, right? The weather is great, our job market is great, there's great opportunities for raising a family here. My kids are part of a generation that were born and raised here in Raleigh, now getting to the point of moving off to college themselves. And so we're seeing that segment of our population create an opportunity in our market for projects like this, for the active adult whose kids have, again, left home. As Laura mentioned, we also see grandparents whose kids and grandkids live here who are looking for an active community, but also one that's close to their families. And so we've, we've started to transition, if you will, away from primarily the larger homes on larger lots that Toll Brothers has been known for over the years, to develop these active adult communities. We have two that are finishing up in Apex, one that Laura mentioned, the Regency at White Oak Creek, and then also Cedar Crossings, both successful projects for us. The imagery you see here are from those recent projects that are, I think, great examples of what we're proposing here. And I just want to underscore the, the real critical component of a project like this for us is that lifestyle. The low-maintenance living, the exterior maintenance is taken care of through contracts with the HOA. Generally, the homes are single-floor living. There are some options for second floors that are loft-style arrangements to add to the homes, but again, master downstairs, living again on the ground floor. But as part of that, beyond the homes and beyond the, the interior living there is the, that community amenity is really at the heart of these projects. Laura showed you just a snapshot of the social calendar from, from the White Oak Creek project. I spoke to the, the director over there today, and they're excited that the weather's finally getting better and the pickleball courts are seeing a lot more activity and, as well as some of the groups that are, you know, organizing their activities in the clubhouse, et cetera. They're all excited about getting back together. So the things that you've heard about that we're proposing in this plan, these aren't just things that the planning staff has said you have to do. These are things that we think are critical to do, to make, again, a lifestyle community here, one that we can be proud of, one that we think will continue to carry that luxury brand that we've worked so hard to build, one that we think will be a, a great addition to the town of Garner. So thank you again for your time. Be available for any questions that come up. Thank you.
Thank you, sure. Thank you. Okay, do we have another person for the applicant? Is that you, ma'am?
Yes, sorry, I was the last slide.
All right.
My name is Caroline Bodarsky, and I am a licensed traffic engineer in the state of North Carolina, and my address is 58- of North Carolina, and my address is 5808 Farringdon Place in Raleigh, North Carolina. Staff already went over most of this, but just to reiterate that this development is not expected to trigger a TIA per the Town and NCDOT trip generation guidelines. And I just wanted to point out that these trip generation thresholds are typically based on the likelihood of significant impact on a roadway network, and typically 100 trips during a weekday peak hour would have a minimal impact on a roadway network. So that's why these thresholds are set. And as the town stated earlier, the development will still need to be approved by the NCDOT and will be required to improve the site frontage along East Garner and Auburn Station Road. And I'm available to answer any questions that you have regarding the traffic.
Okay, thank you very much. Are you the last presenter?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess we'll open it up for any questions for any of you who've presented to the council, if you didn't get a chance to ask those earlier. So Mr. Matthews, you have anything? Mr. Singleton?
Please.
Okay, this way. Mr. Dellinger?
I have a few questions. Could someone answer why you're asking for rezoning from the MR1? What inherent benefit is there? I'm struggling to see the benefit of the lower density. Why couldn't this be developed under its current zoning?
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. So your question was the basis for the reasoning for the rezoning?
Yep.
I think it's twofold. Number one, this is, as staff mentioned, this is the current zoning as it exists today is an obsolete zoning district. So any, as I understand it, any development that were to occur would necessitate a zoning of sorts to be able to develop. Is that correct?
Yeah, the PRD district has a lot of different options. You're able to ask for deviations, to create your own lot size, or ask for your own lot sizes and setbacks, so it's got more flexibility than just trying to develop under the straight MR1.
But they could develop under the MR1.
It could be developed under the MR1. What they're proposing probably cannot be.
Yep. As, thank you for that clarification. So in addition, a lot of those, of course, the, having the product mix, having the, we want to have different options and create different types of product types, so it's not cookie cutter. And in order to do that, you, it's necessary to propose a PRD which allows for differing lot types. It allows for, as you, I think, as you alluded to earlier from staff, you talked about requesting a deviation from building setbacks. You know, as Mr. Westmoreland mentioned, you know, the active adult community is one that downsizes because they want a smaller yard and smaller setbacks. These are folks that want to get to know their neighbors and are happy to wave and ask for that cup of tea on the front porch, so they want to be closer by nature. And also, you know, this is something where they have the option to have their yards maintained by the HOA. So this is something that, and so all those reasons are really led us down the path of a PRD development zoning.
Another question is, what sort of the vision, you know, a comprehensive plan and the transportation plan calls for rail being very close to this neighborhood, which would be ideal for higher-density mixed-use, just higher-density in general, was the vision for how this integrates into that higher-density plan?
I think it's the integration of still having lots that are, you know, this is, this is a, there's a lot of factors that go in to, you know, you talk about higher-density, but you also have to meet, you know, the 25% open space requirement, the 12% tree safe, all that kind of starts to, you know, shrink, and you want to make that developable area as pleasing as possible for residents. So that was one. We also have, obviously, a limited number of riparian areas, but ones that we need to be mindful of. And certainly, you know, as, if you can go back to the lane use slide. Thank you. So we have, we have, we have two. We have the prominent East Garner Road entrance that'll be fairly close to the transit. We'll have sidewalks on both sides. We'll also have a walking path all the way that extends along the length of Auburn Nightdale Road. So folks will have the opportunity, not only from this neighborhood, but from existing communities, to have the opportunity to make this area a lot more walkable and eventually go to that existing transit. So I certainly understand your concern about having some higher density. What's also on our minds is the fact that there's existing communities around that we need to be mindful of and really want to be good neighbors and be conscious of, how does that fit into the existing fabric of the community? It's very easy to talk about, you know, let's, and we even, you know, looked at, you know, well, let's look at, you know, apartments here or higher-density, but really, how does that fit into what's happening on, you know, Auburn Nightdale Road and what's happening in other areas of the community not too far away with Edge of Auburn that was also recently approved? So we need to be mindful of what these roads can handle. And to me, smart growth talks about having a variety of density, but also smartly planning to do it incrementally and not all at one time. You know, this doesn't have to be the be-all and end-all to have, you know, transit oriented development here. There's still going to be other opportunities to have it in this area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, did you have any to go with Mr. Vance?
Ms. Holloman or the staff? Question in reference to, it may be for you. You alluded to the sidewalks on East Garner, is it East Garner Road? On Garner Road and along Auburn Nightdale Road. Will the sidewalks connect to the development to the north Auburn Village?
I believe that there's, is there an existing sidewalk on that Auburn Village?
Yes, there is, on Auburn Village there is.
So yes, I think there is.
Yes, there is. Answered it. So will this sidewalk connect with that one?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. I want to say my frivolous question to the end. Mr. Bamford, could you go back to the social calendar? Okay, thank you, sir. Either by personal experience or maybe through my wife or whatever, I know what most of these things are, but I'm intrigued, and maybe I'm the only one who doesn't know it. Let me find it again. I think it starts with a K.
I thought you were looking at the one on the 15th, under pickleball meeting.
Well, smoke and joke. That wasn't the one I was thinking about, but I'll find it here in just a minute. At any rate, it's, oh, I know what it is. It's on the 9th. Can you tell me what, how do you pronounce it? Is it rumikub? I just had not heard of that. Oh, maybe I shouldn't have asked that question. I don't know.
It's a board game. Rummy Cube. It's just a board game.
Okay, I haven't. Thank you very much.
I've played it before.
Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you. That's not too relevant to the approval of the project, I don't think, but that helps me out a little bit. Okay, enough of the frivolousness, okay. Okay, Ed? Anything else?
I don't have anything.
Okay, we've heard from everybody that wanted to give information from the applicant, is that right? So I believe I can close the public hearing at this time and call for a motion.
I think you need to see if this is a public hearing, if any one in the audience would like to.
Well, you're right, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Are there persons in the audience who wish to speak to this issue? Oh, okay, there are. I'm sorry, yeah. I'm getting ahead of myself. So I'm not sure who was first, it doesn't matter, okay. Okay.
You're my ride anyway, so.
Okay, okay. Please tell us your name and address, sir.
Mr. Mayor, councilman, name is Danny Fanning. Address is 2700 Daniel's Landing Drive in Raleigh, but we're there on the edge of this property. We, my wife and I attended the meeting earlier, and our main concern is the traffic. Because on the map, you can't tell it that good, but the interest to our subdivision, if you're going north on Auburn Nightdale, we enter into our subdivision to the right. If we're coming out and we want to go south, we have to come to the left. And the second entrance to this proposed subdivision, we're on one end of the curve, there's a curve right there on Auburn Nightdale, we're on one end of the curve and that one's on the other. There's a turn lane if you're coming south on, I think, yes, south on Auburn Nightdale, that if you're turning in our subdivision, that if you have to watch your mirror because people come in there, it's a pretty sharp curve and people, it can be dangerous sometimes. So we questioned that in that meeting, and we were told that there were no proposed improvements for that, which I see that's changed from this presentation here. But I also noted on the traffic count, that was, the date on there was, the last one was 2019. If anybody travels Auburn Nightdale Road just in the past nine to 12 months, the traffic has increased tremendously on Auburn Nightdale. And so my only concern is they really need to look at the entrances to the subdivision and the added traffic that we already have on there, plus this subdivision, then you have Auburn Estates that's still building, and then there's a proposed 800-some houses out there at the intersection of Old Walkham Road and Rock Quarry that could affect our traffic also. So I'd just like to have my concerns made, and I think I speak for most of my neighbors.
Okay, thank you, sir.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Ma'am, I'd be happy to hear from you.
Mayor, council? My name is Natalie Urshard. I live at 2704 Daniel's Landing Drive in Raleigh. My concern is also traffic. I know there's some discussion about high-density. I personally wouldn't want an apartment complex built right across. I think it'd be more sense to build an apartment complex on the other side of East Garner, near 70, so you can get on 40 and everything a lot easier. I used to commute before the pandemic to RTP every day, and traffic is a big issue with me because I'm stuck in my car for 45 minutes to an hour both ways, a lot of times, you know, when everything's going. So people do go around that curve fast. I'd be interested to know what the improvements are because at least a right turn lane, you might need to do a left turn lane. It really is an impact to us to getting out of our neighborhood. So that's my big concern about that. And that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the applicant care to respond to that at all?
Hi, the traffic engineer. I'd love to talk to you guys after this as well, if you're interested. But, so the development, obviously, it's not going to trigger a TIA based on the trip generation. And as far as the curve goes, the NCDOT has specific site distance requirements, so they're not going to approve that driveway permit without ensuring that that's a safe curve. So they'll be taking a close look at that, and they won't let the development construct that driveway there unless they ensure that that is safe to do. And the development will be required to build their half of the frontage along Auburn Nightdale Road, so that will be widening Auburn Nightdale, and it will only be on their side of the road, but it will be adding pavement there which will allow vehicles to move out of the way. And that is, like I said, I'd be happy to discuss this further with you guys, but this development will be required to meet NCDOT requirements for site distance, and they will be providing additional pavement on Auburn Nightdale.
Okay, thank you for that, and I would encourage you folks to do exactly that, maybe outside the chambers if you want to take some more time to discuss that a little more fully, that would be a good idea, I think. Okay, did I recognize everybody now who wished to speak? I apologize for almost missing you two. Thank you for being here.
Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Bamford very quickly. On the TIA, what is the threshold for triggering a traffic impact analysis?
I'll let Stacy, or you can answer that question if you like.
The threshold for the town of Garner is 1,000 daily trips or 100 weekday peak-hour trips during either AM or PM peak hour. And the threshold for NCDOT is 3,000 daily trips. They don't have a weekday peak hour threshold.
And what was it for this project? I don't remember the slide.
Yes, yes. This project generated, I've got it right here, 920 daily peak-hour trips and 62 weekday AM peak-hour trips and 74 weekday PM peak-hour trips.
That explains wanting the lower density, so you can decrease the trips and not have to do a traffic impact analysis.
Yes, yes, if they increase the density.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Is that it? Everybody had a chance to speak that wants to? Okay. All right, I'm going to close this public hearing and ask for a motion referring this to the planning commission, I believe.
I move. Suck it.
All right, move and properly suck it. Any questions? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, vote no. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you all for your time and for the presentation. We'll hear back after the planning commission has looked at it. Okay, good to see you all. Item four under public hearings is our, another opportunity for a public hearing on our recommended budget for FY21 and FY22. Mr. Hodges, is Mr. Franks with us virtually? Is that how we're hearing from him, I'm sure?
Yes, sir.
Just a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Can everybody see my screen?
Yeah, will we see the screen?
All right, great. So tonight, we're going to go and provide an overview on FY21, 2020 budget for the public, and also provide an overview since the release of the recommended budget, so the budget work session, what's been changes made or some recommendations to consider. So also going to provide a review of that so that council can have some discussion conversation and the public can be made aware. All right, so there were several major themes. There was sufficient revenue to grow and to cover basic requirements, but there were many high-priority items that were not funded. So we were able to cover kind of your core requirements, the things that were truly critical, but there were a lot of items that were unfunded that we also deemed as being high priority. There's also uncertainty about what the world will look like after COVID-19, despite the fact that things are going back to normal. There's still some uncertainty about the long-term changes, things like, you know, how many people will actually go back to work? How will that impact the town's sales tax? Things along those lines that are still to be determined and are not certain. The other highlight of the town is prepared for the upcoming November 2021 bond referendum, so this is something the town's been working on for a while. And this budget prepares us to meet the long-term requirements associated with project management, financial management, within the bond referendum if it is approved. Additional highlights of the recommended budget, it did not include a tax increase. The rate remained at $0.49.71 for $100 of assessed value. The budget included reductions of $135,000, so those are reductions off of departments' requests, and it had unfunded decision packages of almost $2.6 million. So that's $2.6 million in items that departments felt like they needed to meet their baseline operations, new requests that were not funded. And that included 18 new positions, many of which were considered, again, high priority by staff. So these are the items that we were talking about earlier. We were able to cover most of the basic, like truly critical items, but many of the high-priority We were able to cover most of the basic, like truly critical items, but many of the high priority items were not funded. We did fund four decision packages. Again, it allowed us to address critical requirements, so that included two police officers, funding for project management and financial support for the bond referendum, a GIS analyst, and then park rangers within the public works department to manage a variety of different, um, needs within the park system. So on the revenue side, the town continued to experience strong growth in the added volume of taxes, and there was a proposed tax adjustment. So several different things drove that. We continue to see strong home growth despite the fact that there was, obviously, the pandemic. People continued to build homes. We also had Amazon's personal property coming online. So Amazon included a variety of conveyor belts and technology that ultimately came online within this year's budget. Those numbers will depreciate quickly as items like that don't do. But, um, for this year, it's a large increase. And then we kind of included a overall 8% decrease for personal property. This was across the board, again, related to the pandemic, um, conservative related to what we think, um, personal property growth is going to be moving forward. We also had significant growth in sales tax based on the reduce FY '21 projection and strong performance. So sales tax is one of the more interesting categories. It's the second biggest category for the town in terms of revenue. And we are actually experiencing growth at a significantly higher percentage than we had been experiencing pre-COVID. So we're comparing most that were not impacted by COVID-19 to most that are impacted now by COVID-19. And we are actually growing at a faster rate than we were before COVID. There are a variety of potential explanations for that. There are obviously stimulus dollars that are out there, one-time funding that people may have purchased, large one-time items. People may be staying home as opposed to be to a workforce center like, uh, RTP or City of Raleigh. They're staying in Garner and leaving their, their dollars there. So, or could be that people aren't paying childcare. It's all kind of speculative at this point. So we're not exactly sure what the long-term future there looks like. And this growth was offset by interest income reductions. So the town invests this funding, um, basically its fund balance is piggy bank in the stock market. And mostly more conservative than that bond market. And interest rates are just down compared to where they were in the past. So that resulted in some reductions of revenue. And we did include, and council was, um, okay, based on the budget work session, with a variety of different fee adjustments. So the town reviewed, compared our planning and development rates to a variety of different other localities in the Wake County area to make sure they were consistent. We also reviewed to determine if there were any fees that we were not currently charging that other localities were. And, um, we recommended a variety of changes, and those changes at this point, um, will be included in the adopted budget based on council's initial feedback. On the expenditure side, we continue to see reductions in group rate insurance. So this is the insurance that the town pays for for its employees after experiencing numerous years of significant increases. We have another year of a 5% decrease, and this has a pretty significant impact based on group insurance being a large, uh, cost driver. And other localities are now experiencing those high increases. So, um, it remains an area where we're trying to improve by implementing a variety of different initiatives to, uh, keep our employees as healthy as we can. We also had to reset the budget in the post-COVID-19 world. So if you remember last year when we were developing the budget, COVID-19 was just starting, and there was a lot of uncertainty. So we reduced travel and training, um, a lot of park activities, different things that we thought may be impacted by COVID-19. And many of them ultimately were. Um, but now that we are transitioning out of the COVID-19 environment into a, we call the new normal, um, we are anticipating those activities to go back to normal. So we had to increase, increase, um, some of the budget items there. We had significant growth in the revenue savings plan based on higher revenue estimates. So the revenue savings plan defers revenue growth in a variety of the town's large, uh, categories, including property tax and sales tax. So a percentage of that growth is then deferred to cover long-term capital requirements or debt service. So we need to use that formula this year, um, and resulted in a large increase. I would note that a portion of that increase is being repurposed to cover the recurring cost of bond litigations. So project managers, um, instruction inspector, and administrative staff. Since it's in the same beam of, uh, capital requirements, and those positions are required to successfully implement the capital items, um, we've included those in the budget deferred based on a one-time basis. Then we also had, again, reductions of, um, approximately $460,000, and we used one-time funding in FY '21 to reduce the budget. So at the budget work session, council made a variety of, uh, decisions. And recommended the following changes. So council recommended, or the consideration of an increase in the tax rate of 1.5 cents to cover critical requirements. This was based on a variety of conversations. We looked at the multi-year budget, which is a five-year budget, uh, that looks at the long-term needs of the town. And currently, staff is forecasting six positions on an annual basis, which is likely not sufficient enough to cover the long-term growth. However, staff is trying to be conservative. So based on that, the existing needs of it in this year, um, council saw if it, essentially, raised the tax rate by 1.5 cents to cover any critical requirements. That would fund two additional police officers, which are necessary based on the town's continued growth. As the town continues to expand and the population expands, um, we have more calls for service. So we need more police officers to be backgrowing demands. It would fund critical fire capital. So the fire department had a variety of items that were not, um, funded, um, by the town of Wake County, and this will cover some of those items. It would fund the conversion of part-time public works, grounds, and employees full-time. So this is a variety of different needs. Currently, the town is having the hard-time recruiting positions that are, um, what we call part-time without benefits, um, in particular, items like parks and grounds. So the conversion allows staff to, um, it basically enhances their recruitment story, allowing people to have benefits, which enhances our recruitment abilities and also enhances our retention. So we're not just having people kind of come in for one summer and then leave and having to be retrained. So this will stabilize that area within our public works. We are also funding a fleet manager and a lead mechanic conversion. And what this will allow the public works department to do is start to have the fleet manager look long-term. Um, the town has a variety of different long-term needs with the fire department potentially merging. The police department continuing to expand. Um, our overall vehicle fleet continuing to expand. So this position will be able to focus on those higher-term needs. Um, and we would be able to save some dollars with, um, some staff changes to, um, basically create succession plan beneath that. We would also fund a sidewalk maintenance pilot program. So this is a one-time cost that would allow a contractor to go and review a certain segment of the town's sidewalk to, um, recommend potential, uh, adjustments. As we continue to expand our infrastructure, continue to build new sidewalks, we need to maintain the existing sidewalk infrastructure, and that is a first step there. Also funded a communications IT specialist. As we continue to have IT requirements expand, um, as well as communication. So meetings like this where there are going to be folks that are remote and other requirements is kind of, it's going to be a long-term need. Um, so council thought solid fit to add this position. And despite this increase, I wanted to note that Garner will continue to have the lowest effective tax rate in Wake County based on current property tax values and tax rates. So this is effective based on, um, the value of hound homes within Garner. I have a chart that I'll show. And it would also leave an available balance of a little over $52,000. So this is the updated effective tax rate chart. It includes the 1.5% potential increase in the property tax section for Garner. Again, this is based on impairing the effective tax rate, the tax rate in terms of property tax to the actual value of homes and localities. So not looking at, um, everything based on the same value, looking at, you know, what the average home in Garner costs, what the average home in Harrah costs, and using that to, uh, extrapolate out the tax rate. So as you can see, even with the tax rate increase, Garner will remain the most affordable locality, um, by that measure in Wake County. And then this following chart, um, was a summary of the updated five-year budget based on 1.5% tax increase. So you can see the various items funded, um, below on the expenditure side, as well as the 1.5% tax increase above in red. Um, and you can see the one-time balance, um, of 52, 663, as well as enhanced future years. So this number was, uh, negative last time with the tax increase and some one-time costs coming off. We are in a better position next year. Um, we'll become in a better position FY '24. Um, we do have a, um, a tax increase projected within that to cover some bond requirements. So this is primarily covering the fire department that we'd be building. And then that number goes back down in FY '25, um, based on, um, some additional. So we had, do have a variety of final decisions for council to make. Um, we do have the additional almost $53,000. So staff recommends that the remaining balance be spent on one-time capital. Um, there are a variety of different items that, uh, we could include, but we recommended the playground guardian bleacher replacement in Station 3 ban heaters. That was the one item that was not covered, um, in the fire department's, um, capital requirements. However, we could also reduce the tax rate by .11 cents to balance the budget as well. So the following two slides just show the impacts of those on the five-year budget. So if we went with the one-time capital, you can see the other capital added here. We didn't have a zero balance. Everything remains consistent because that is one-time in nature. If we reduce the tax rate down to 1.39 cent increase, um, you can see we'd have a small shortfall that we could cover by raising a different, um, revenue item in FY '22, and then, um, a projected shortfall increasing in FY '23, um, and you can see the trickle-down effects. With that, I'll take any questions, um, on the recommended budget for council or the public.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Franks. I, I was going to ask quickly, uh, I looked at it and studied it carefully. I know we received an email from the fire chief. Mr. Manager, do we, did, did Mr. Franks have access to, to, to that information?
Yes, he, he's aware of that information. Yet a fire chief did submit, uh, information to the council concerning, um, I guess his prioritization of some of the items that were, um, not originally funded. And, um, the council was gracious to include some of the capital items. But I think since that, uh, meeting, um, he's found out that Wake County has the, um, the air breathing apparatus on a list for emergency replacement if needed. And, uh, if they break down during the year, that Wake County has pledged to, um, pay their portion, their cost share portion. So, and, um, since also found out that the, um, the heaters have been repaired and should no longer be on the list for consideration. And that, um, his preference is for the, um, the community risk captain to be funded, uh, for six months. And he provided some cost information for that.
Okay, um, I don't know if any other council has a question, but I, I had looked at it. I hadn't looked at it in detail, but I understood, uh, obviously, his priority in that one area had changed. And Wake County is stepping up to help with the, uh, with the SCBA's, I guess. Um, okay, uh, council, uh, questions for Mr. Franks at this point in time? And, yeah.
Yes, uh, well, question, yeah, Michael or, or Rodney or John, anyone? So in, uh, talking with Chief Poole, I talked to him a couple of times, read his emails regarding the air compressor system and then the request from the captain. Uh, that would make a, a change in the budget because he, he said only partially your funding because they're going through the, uh, uh, candidate hiring process. And then removing the, uh, the heaters at Station, uh, Station 3, I believe, $8,700 and then about, uh, uh, $25,000 roughly. So, uh, if, if we decide to go that route, are there some other, is there another one, uh, one-time, uh, capital item? And why not, is there? I know there is, there's millions of dollars in there that request. So is there another capital item, one or two capital items that, that those dollars could be used on?
We didn't recommend for the extra 50? I think we got another 50 or so that was left over, is that what you mean?
I think Mr. Singleton is calculating the difference.
From the air compressor to the captain, which is about 30 to 56, so about 26. And then the 8,000 for the heaters, so you're talking about 34. So I just am saying, if, if the council moves forward with those, rec, those requests from fire to fire, uh, is there other capital items that you may so choose?
I think Mr. Franks had a slide that had the three things that we were recommending before the fire proposal. So I'm thinking that, that the budget team would probably go back to that list, but I don't want to speak for the manager.
And we did, um, so, yeah, that list, and then we also were trying to keep a little bit of cushioning, um, for the, we're still continuing to look at the, um, executive assistant, um, pay range. So we're going to keep a little bit for that.
That's with the fire department, right?
Not that much, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Yes, but.
You answered the question there.
But there are, um, a list of things that.
You got three items and you got, and now two of them because the last one doesn't need to be done. Okay.
Um, and also, which may be obvious, but by substituting in a half year of a, of a position, any position, it doesn't matter which one, it will change the, the, the numbers for the future years. So that's just a, a reality of any position that you consider.
Yeah, the other thing about that position is, um, that position is primarily an education position and risk management analysis for, um, primarily in-town, town limit properties and situations. So that would not be a cost share position by Wake County. So we will forever have 100% of that position.
Well, then maybe we need to consider funding it for more than half the year, maybe nine months of the year. So it's not as much of an impact in the '23 budget, but it's just.
Well, the chief had indicated by the time he advertises it and goes through a process, uh, it, it would be six months.
Months.
Yeah. And if, if it was to be filled, you know, internally, then they would backfill any position that got vacated, so.
Okay.
So I think, I think he was, he was satisfied with it being six months.
All right, other questions, uh, from Mr. Franks? Anything?
Uh, just the only things I had questions on, and Gray clarified those. Thank you guys for that.
Okay. Down here, Mr. Vance. You good? Uh, okay, um, anybody, let me see, um, anybody in the audience wish to, uh, comment on the, uh, on the budget and the information shared by Mr. Franks? Looks like all staff here almost, well, maybe not. Okay, hearing none. Anything else? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing here and, um.
Yes, there were no questions about the adding playground guardian or the bleacher replacement as potential capital items.
It seemed like a reasonable, um, way to expend, um, those funds, to me. Anybody question? Okay. Uh, and let's see, we'll get another shot at this, so when? Uh, well, it'd be open for public comment at our next meeting. No, let's see.
No, that, I mean, this, well, our next meeting is the work session, which, but at the next, um, regular meeting, we can, um, have it open for, um, any questions or adoption, or however you want to. You see fit for any adjustments or anything we need to make, but.
I guess I would have anticipated we'd have at least one other public, uh, public hearing on it at our first meeting in June, maybe.
Well, this is, this is the last public hearing. There will be another public meeting for you to consider how you want to proceed and finalize the budget.
We had two public hearings in the last two meetings.
Yeah, we've had.
Yeah, yeah, I know that. But is there any reason why we're going to have a third? I, I'm just saying, there's not, not, not many people here, maybe not many people are going to show up to, 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 to hear this or make comments, but.
So maybe ask this, Mr. Mayor, ask staff to, you've heard what we said.
Right.
Adjust the numbers, just get it to us in an email so we'll have that information. I know.
Right, I was going to say, at some point, we'll have to close the books and prepare the final information and have, uh, a budget ordinance ready for you to approve, so.
Right. So what we heard tonight, uh, other than discussion here, we, we have the presentation of a, of a balanced budget with the revenues. And, and I'm hearing the, uh, what was it? The, uh, tax increase would be 1.39 cents?
1.5.
1.5.
1.5.
We can change that, we left it at 1.5.
There was, um, possibility to reduce it by .11 cents if we didn't include these other two capital items with the remainder.
Well, that's what I was speaking of. Okay. All right. Okay, all right, let me close this out. All right, uh, I'll close that, uh, public hearing then. And that was our last public hearing, I believe, for the night, is that right?
Right.
So before we, uh, go to the next item, it's getting close to the nine o'clock. So before we go to the next item, it's getting close to the nine o'clock hour. And I'm going to ask that we take our, shall we say, almost our nine o'clock recess. See, I know Mr. Johnson is here and some others. We'll try to come back in 10 minutes. Would that be enough time, council? All right, all right. I'll declare in the journal, but 10 minutes, come back and get into new and old business at that time. Okay, thank you, council, for getting back promptly. We will call ourselves back to order and move into item I on the agenda, new and old business. And the first item of business is a presentation from Mr. Johnson, our town engineer, regarding Eagle Ridge traffic calming. Good afternoon, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. As you know, we had had a lot of discussions about traffic calming as of recent with the town staff working on the update, refresh of the traffic calming policy. And I believe we had some discussions that as we were nearing the end of that process, that we were already actively working with Eagle Ridge. I've got David Smothers, president of Eagle Ridge HOA, with us tonight. So this process kind of ran a little bit parallel as we were wrapping up the policy changes. So our agenda tonight, I'll talk about some of the work that we've completed to date with Eagle Ridge, give you a very brief project background and some, go through a quick analysis of the studies we did, talk about the engineering and table designs, speed table designs, which were staff's recommendation for this project. Talk briefly about the neighborhood outreach. Again, this is a community-led petition-type project. It's not town-initiated. So the Eagle Ridge HOA also had duties in accordance with the policies to provide neighborhood outreach. And then we'll talk about funding options and the annual resurfacing contract that we currently are in progress with, followed up by staff's final recommendations and next steps moving forward. So quite a bit of timeline here. This originally started back in February of last year when Eagle Ridge submitted a, the HOA submitted a traffic calming application. It included four streets in Eagle Ridge. Staff began working on traffic counts in March. And of course, as everybody knows, that's when we started having a lot of the problems with the COVID pandemic. So shortly after, I think we got one study done. That's about the time that Wake County schools closed. Shortly after that, businesses were put into closure as well. And so traffic changed dramatically. And staff made the decision at that time to temporarily suspend all traffic counts because we felt that they would not be able to meet the volume criteria, of course, due to the traffic decreases. So back in November, we resumed those as traffic operations around town started to return to somewhat more normalized. We're still not quite there yet, but much better than we were. And then in February, that's when council approved and adopted the new traffic calming policy. And so that kind of like the stars aligned, kind of bringing those two together kind of at the same spot, which is why we've been able to bring this so soon afterwards. March and April of this year, Eagle Ridge did their neighborhood outreach per the new traffic calming guidelines. And then just this last week, Eagle Ridge HOA board had their board meeting and voted to approve the traffic projects, which brings us to tonight's council presentation. Just a brief map that kind of just shows the four streets that were initially submitted. So these are the four largest streets in Eagle Ridge. Just to give you some basis, we've got, oops, I'm sorry. This is not working the same way on the web's version. But out here, we've got Old Stage Road. And then you've got Waterville and Seastone are the two main ingress egress routes. Seastone's a very long route. And then Competition is the one that goes by the clubhouse and as well by the golf course clubhouse. And then Challenge comes together between Seastone and Competition. So we did a couple, due to the length of a couple of the streets, we did a couple studies, some near the front end of the subdivision where you'll have more lots and more use. And then we also went deeper into the neighborhood to see if traffic patterns changed, if volumes went down, because it may have been that only partial of the street might need traffic calming. So as I mentioned, in March, that's when we had the school and business closures. Competition, the first one there in March of last year. Remember, the new criteria is 600 vehicles per day for a local street and the 85th percentile speed being at or above eight miles over the posted speed limit. All these streets are 25. So 33 was our minimum speed to meet the criteria threshold for speed. I've kind of shown you there. There's a few in yellow that were just below the 600 vehicles per day. But staff was of the opinion that because all of these occurred after the Wake County school closures and business closures, that they would have easily surpassed the volume requirement in a pre-pandemic traffic operations level. So Seastone had one passing. And then the one that was deeper into the neighborhood was, you saw speeds go down slightly and volumes drop dramatically. And that was expected. Challenge did not meet speed in either scenario of the locations. So that one did not pass. And then Waterville was similar to Seastone in that from Competition out to Old Stage met the criteria. While once you got past Competition, which makes sense because that's what goes over to the clubhouse, you get lower traffic volumes and speeds go down because it's mostly just local traffic. So this is what we ended up with. I've shown in green what we felt passed the criteria while we excluded the streets or portions of streets that did not meet the criteria. So we, three out of the four streets passed in some form or fashion. So as you remember, from when we went through the traffic calming policy, we determined what type of measures to use based on street classification and type. But all these streets are similar in width and classification. And so speed tables are the preferred method for all three streets. Following the criteria being met per the policy, staff went through and provided a design for each street to show the locations. We take into account industry standard is 400 to 500 feet spacing to ensure speeds are kept around the 20 to 25 mile an hour range. Seastone Street, first leg that was met the calming was just under a mile, 4,300 feet. And we ended up with eight tables, so just over 500 feet on average. We do our best to put these at locations that are near property lines, trying to make sure that it's capturing traffic coming off of side streets, but trying to reduce conflicts as much as possible. Competition Road was a little bit shorter. It was 3,700 feet. So we ended up with around seven tables. And then Waterville Street was the shortest segment, 2,700 feet. We ended up with a total of five speed tables. So the next step was the neighborhood outreach. So that got, we, staff provided our designs to the Eagle Ridge HOA. And then it was, per the policy, kind of turned over to them to do their own efforts to gather community support and make a determination on whether they wanted to move forward with the projects as designed. So the Eagle Ridge conducted a neighborhood survey, which I provided a copy in your packet. I sent that out on April 7. Then they also had an open neighborhood virtual meeting on April 15. And then after another week or so of allowing people, and they had people, I was at that meeting as well and was able to answer some questions and concerns from a few owners. But then I guess a week or two after that meeting, they had a deadline for everybody to submit their responses. So they, in total, got 155 responses to the survey, which I believe was around 61%. This was not, this is not our numbers, but this was from the HOA, about 61% in favor of the traffic calming projects. And so from that, Eagle Ridge had another meeting for the HOA board just on the 12. And they voted four to one in approval of the traffic calming projects. And this was sort of like the, I guess, they served as kind of the getting pick for the traffic calming program in the neighborhood outreach because it's the first time we went through that. And they did a great job. So I mean, there's a lot of work on their end. So I mean, there's a lot of work on their end, but they, it went very smoothly, very organized, so kudos to Eagle Ridge. And then funding options. The town does not have a dedicated funding source at this time. I know there's been some discussions about that. I did want to mention that we've got currently our 2021 annual resurfacing contract, around two-thirds complete, three-quarters complete, with Daniels Incorporated. And as you may remember, when we awarded that project, we had pretty competitive bits. We had about $178,000 in leftover funding of what we had budgeted for the resurfacing contract. And at that time, we had mentioned that there was plans to eventually, as we got closer to completion of the project, bringing back a potential change order to maybe add a few more streets that were, that just missed the cut for this year's contract. And then we also, there's been council discussion about speed tables in Greenbrier and Cloverdale that have been out there for years, and it's an outdated design that has not been, it's certainly met its life expectancy, it's causing some maintenance issues with public works, and we're looking to try to get those swapped out with this more modern design. So between those two, the additional streets, the speed humps in Greenbrier and Cloverdale, we don't have enough money for all that to be covered as well as Eagle Ridge. So that, from that, we went out, we got an estimate from Daniels Incorporated to what it would cost to do the Eagle Ridge project. Total of 20 tables, it was $65,000. I think when we did our presentations a few months ago, we were looking at three to 6,000 is about what we typically see. So that's, that's a very competitive price. Our option one was to identify an additional funding source for the $65,000 so that we could do all three projects, which would mean adding the additional streets to the contract and the swapping out of the Greenbriers Cloverdale speed humps, and then also adding in the work in Eagle Ridge. That was option one. Option two would be to utilize the leftover funding to cover this work, but that would mean modifying the change order and possibly reducing or removing some of the additional streets that we were going to add previously, or deferring the Greenbrier Cloverdale work. And then option three was to approve this design, but do defer this work to possibly next year, once an additional funding is identified. And that could be through the, a new budget line item in the traffic calming program or what have you. I think the next good opportunity for competitive bid pricing would be the 2022 resurfacing contract. Unfortunately, that we, just because of the economy and the fact that DOT's workloads are going to eventually start coming back, we do anticipate that bid pricing will eventually escalate and could escalate as soon as next year. So based on that information, since the prices in this year's contract were quite competitive due to the DOT shortage of work and issues related to the pandemic and the fact that prices will likely escalate over the next year or two, staff recommends option number one, which is to identify $65,000 in funding so that we can incorporate the Eagle Ridge traffic calming project into this year's 2021 annual resurfacing contract, along with the change order work that was already planned to come to council at the, I think, the first June meeting. And so next steps would be to bring that change order to council for approval. If approved, town manager would execute change order number one with Daniels Incorporated, and we would expect all work to be completed by this August. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, Council, you've heard Mr. Johnson's presentation, and the, let's see, is he the HOA president? Yes, okay, I was thinking, yeah, thank you. Questions regarding this proposal? Any?
I don't have questions. I appreciate Chris, you know, being open to, once we got the, found out there was $178,000, I emailed he and Mr. Dixon and Mr. Hodges and said, hey, can we look at redoing the old outdated Cloverdale Greenbrier traffic calming devices that are not very effective any longer? And they were open to that, and then they told me about Eagle Ridge, and they didn't move, Eagle Ridge moved very fast. And so with the price, and Chris clearly stated, we don't know what the price would be, but it may not be competitive next year. I appreciate the option one coming back before, so I appreciate the three options you presented. But I would support option one because we can pay three more streets, replace all the old, old traffic calming devices in Greenbrier and Cloverdale, which I think those neighborhoods, I think we all know they want them done, and then also put the, I believe, 20 devices in Eagle Ridge. So I appreciate you getting that information to us, and I agree with what they recommend on option one.
Okay, thank you, Ms. England. Anybody else come in?
I also agree with that. As apparent, Daniels is doing us a good job in being very competitive with its rates, which, and it's a local company too. I think it's good to have those kind of relationships, but I agree with Gray. I don't think it's going, I think with what's going on in the world right now, and cost of things is going to go up, and if we can go ahead and do this, we'll be ahead of the game.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, do you think they're going to be sort of inherent cost savings in incorporating these traffic calming with resurfacing, and is that a way to future, in the futures, reprioritize some of our resurfacing projects in these older neighborhoods?
Well, I'll try to answer the first part of that question because I think that it's definitely cost advantage for the town to bulk them together when bidding it, just because, just with the size of our town and the number of projects we have now, this, of course, may change if there's a bond referendum, and we, in some years, it may be different. But right now, since the last few years since I've been with the town, we don't have a lot of these projects going out, and I don't think we have enough traffic calming to support getting competitive bids on their own. So to me, it's, it's perfect type of work to combine up with the resurfacing contract because pretty much every one of your paving contractors can do this kind of work, and that's where you're going to get your best bang for your buck.
And to the second part, would it have any impact on the prioritization of where we're going to do our resurfacing projects if there is that cost savings, or would you still keep them separately evaluated?
Yeah, I think most of our resurfacing projects are, they're not usually bunched up too much in one area. They're usually spread around town because it's all based on the pavement scoring. Now, of course, some, a lot of subdivisions, they're built all at one time, they're going to be all similar in fashion, but they don't tend to, for some reason, they don't tend to degrade the same over time. Every street gets a little bit more traffic on certain roads than others, so I don't think it would cause any kind of prioritization issues. I think it would just be adding on to the locations that we've got for resurfacing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. England.
Yes, I agree with what has been said by Councilman Gray, and also Mr. Matthews, Councilman Matthews, relative to getting it done now on the option one, and I believe that your assessment is correct with the price of construction in the very near future going up because materials are already going up. I believe the sooner the better. I had the opportunity to drive through, through one of the neighborhoods, Greenbrier, and yep, I just went between them. You know, so it's definitely a need there, and I agree with the option one in doing it this year.
How fast did you go through, though?
It was nice, but...
Did you take the speed when you went through Greenbrier?
I think...
Thread the needle?
Okay, something cute. So Council, well, I guess to state it the way it's stated here is, is council's asked to approve design and funding of projects so that it may be added as a change order to the annual resurfacing contract, but I'm hearing option one is the preferred option, right?
Yeah, we need to come back with funding options at a later meeting in a budget amendment at some point, once we identify the funds.
And what I was going to add is that we do not have fund balance within Powellville Funds anymore. You may remember that last year, we depleted the fund balance that we had built up over a few years. So I checked with Mr. Beck earlier, and we, we will go back and reevaluate to see if there's any additional car tag revenues coming in this year, higher than we originally used to calculate the budget number Chris is working with. If we do, and council's agreeable, we could pull the funds from that first, and then the balance from fund balance. I do recognize, though, that during COVID, there was some delay in car tag renewals and some waiver of penalties, so of all years, it may not, we may or may not be ahead, but we might be less likely to be ahead. But if that's council's desire, we could pull from that fund first, since it's a dedicated fund for these type purposes, and then the balance from fund balance.
Okay.
My question in the future, for the future funding of traffic calming, is that, do we foresee that coming from street maintenance funds and resurfacing, or is it its own dedicated issue that we don't have future funding for?
I mean, it was not anywhere in this year's, I mean, the proposed budget, was it?
No, it wasn't. Well, in the past, we've, the last few years, we've gotten favorable paving numbers. I don't know if that will continue, and we've been able to take advantage of that surplus, but that may not continue, so I don't know if that's a good funding strategy.
Another way I'll answer that, Mr. Dellinger, is over the past seven years, when traffic calming has come up, council has chosen to fund some of those through street and sidewalk bond funds that were actively available. So another option could be, if a bond referendum is successful in this fall, then for the next few years, you could choose to evaluate any traffic calming measures that come with bond funds because they would be an allowable expense. So that is one other option you have available.
And do we have any idea at this point, I know that this is an early pilot, and there's not a lot of data, but do we have an idea of sort of how large the universe is for the need for these, or are we not quite at the point of assessing that on a broad scale yet?
Yeah, it's kind of hard just because we've not had any recent applications. So, and this is a, this is a pretty big one. I mean, I don't, there's not a lot of subdivisions out there that would typically have this number required in one project. So I think this is a pretty, on the high end for what we would typically see over, say, a six-month or a year period, but that, it's still early.
It's all resident generated, not...
And if I remember correctly, the way the policy is written, it actually is going to be harder for neighborhoods without HOAs to come together to get these because, and those are typically the older neighborhoods too, so...
I don't believe it was harder, it just didn't change. It was just more streamlined with the HOAs over the past policy. So it's just, it didn't get any harder or easier.
Just harder for them. It's harder, I mean, it's harder if you'd have an entity...
It's harder than this was, yes.
Yeah, because you'd have an entity to organize.
This was easier than the past policy for everybody.
Getting out in the neighborhood and disseminating information and surveys and stuff.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Council, you ready to approve a motion and vote?
I move that we set the recommendation of the town engineer and move forward with option number one.
Sock it. Okay, thank you. Motion properly made and secured. Everybody understands the motion? If you favor the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and it is approved. Thank you, and thank you, sir. Okay, all right. Mr. Stallings, are you ready, sir? Item, Town of Garner Investment Policy. Some might refer to it as an incentive policy, but I think Mr. Stallings suggested an investment policy, so this is a follow-up, obviously, it's the information that was shared earlier. So you're on, Mr. Stallings.
Mayor and town council, it's a pleasure to be before you this evening to bring back the final version of what will be named, if approved, the Garner Economic Development Business Investment Policy. Just as a reminder of kind of where we were and where we are today, this has been a process to take the current Town of Garner Incentive Policy, update it, bring it back into a little bit more of a, to address some of our current needs. And so tonight, we are presenting this for adoption. Just as a reminder, this was a part of the 2020-2021 Plan of Work for the Garner Economic Development Corporation, whose board members are listed there for everyone to see, to take essentially the role as helping to update this policy and then getting public input and bringing it before the town council for final approval. So understanding why we are doing this, a few things, right? A lot has changed since our last policy was adopted, which was in 2015. But what we really want to do is make sure that we are being our most competitive with our partner municipalities in this area, as well as around the nation and the world for that matter. We want to make sure that our policy works in conjunction with our partner agencies, and also look to make sure that the policy reads and functions in the same way that it is actually used. And then finally, but certainly not least important, is to ensure that the policy is easy to understand and administer, not just for our staff to administer, but also for our clients that we interface with to understand how we come to an investment agreement. So we talked about what made a good incentive policy. Here are a few ideas, things that we took through the process to really come up to the recommendation that we have before you this evening. So our goals that were set up by the GDC was to focus on things like economic diversification, ensuring that there are a wide variety of different businesses here in our community, to look at the importance of diversity, equity, inclusivity, and upward mobility, to promote and support sustainable development, and finally, to ensure that the policy helps improve our competitive advantage against those folks that we compete against. And so during the process, we looked at well over, I think it was 20-some-odd policies from around the state of communities that are of similar size and similar kind of geographic regions around major metros, and then some outside of the state of North Carolina. And we were really asking ourselves whether or not, you know, what should our target industries be? Should we still be looking at incentivizing or investing in warehousing and distribution? And then also looking at how can an investment policy help our, help us reach our community goals and values, things like upward mobility and diversity and inclusivity. And then finally, looking at the award period and percentage of investment. This really gets back to the idea of making it easy to understand and easy to administer, but also looking at it as it compares to other communities around our state. So what we found was the Garner Incentive, as is written today, our thresholds were higher than most for investments. We also saw that there really was some ambiguity when it came to job creation thresholds, things like wages, and then, of course, our length of investment. So currently, our policy has something that looks like this, where we invest, provide incentives by splitting out the real and personal property. This, I think, was well-intentioned, but I think now is kind of a little bit more difficult to administer, but also it's a little bit more difficult for our clients to understand how do we arrive at a final package number. The other, so to kind of streamline measures, what we are proposing is a more tiered approach that will allow us to assess a project based on their investment, their job creation, and the wages that they pay. And of particular note is the existing and targeted industry program that we've added in here, which lowers the threshold for existing industries that invest in our community to take advantage of potential investments. So currently, it's at $3 million. This would lower that down to $1 million. And we hope that by doing this, that existing companies will be more eligible and be more willing to reach out and take advantage of those potential investment opportunities, but also allow us to be more competitive when it comes to things like life science, technology, and advanced manufacturing companies. We also included a specific item there for targeted growth areas and opportunity zones. This is really bringing our policy back in line with what we're seeing at the county level with their targeted growth area program. Some of the proposed policy changes that are of particular note, we've kept quite a bit of the policy, but we did upgrade a little bit. The bonuses section, which currently exists in the policy today, was carried forward, but we changed it just a little bit. One of the most notable ones is the upward mobility bonus. The other thing to point out here, in the current policy, a bonus is received, and it would be a percentage of, say, real investment, so a quarter percent or 1% for headquarters. And instead of doing it by a percentage, we're now proposing to do it by adding length onto the actual investment policy. So a headquarters project would still receive... policy. So a headquarters project would still receive a bonus, but it would not be a percentage based on investment. It would be adding a year to that investment agreement. We're still keeping the large job creation investment bonuses, the large investment creation, or large investment bonuses. But really, the upward mobility bonus is really to try to incentivize or invest in those companies who provide, hopefully, our citizens, but certainly their employees, an opportunity to either climb the corporate ladder or to receive benefits that maybe weren't necessarily received in, you know, previous jobs or in other industries in that area. So things like health insurance, 401Ks, tuition reimbursements, also second chance hiring programs, all these ideas are about trying to lift the community up and ensure that the rising tide does raise all ships. Also, to accommodate some of the sustainable objectives, we're looking at a bonus for adaptive and reuse of existing and vacant or obsolete buildings. Once again, providing a little bit of an investment, a little bit of a carrot to those developers to come in and take at a dilapidated building or one that has become obsolete and invest in that to bring it up to current standards. Another item that's brand new to this policy would be the requirement of a diversity, equity, and inclusivity statement for each investment recipient. So essentially, if you were seeking an investment from the Town of Garner, we would require as a part of their investment package contract that they provide a statement that addresses their commitment to and recognition of the importance of diversity, equity, and inclusivity in the workplace. Finally, the GDC would become a review body to the town council. Certainly, all authority and final approval would rest in this body, but the GDC would review, much like many of our other town boards' proposals, and then make recommendations to the board. The other thing that we kept in was the idea of investing in mixed-use and activity centers. This, in the current policy, is called retail mixed-use. We did lower the number of acres that would be required, and we also incorporated this necessity for a multimodal component in order to be, in order to be considered. So you're still looking at the $50 million minimum investment, a little bit lower on the acreage requirement, but we believe this will help us encourage redevelopment in key areas throughout our community, and hopefully, once again, be that carrot to help generate some activity and some redevelopment opportunities around Garner. We'll still see the 1% of actual real and personal investment being the maximum of the incentive. That is standard in the current policy as well. So going back, we believe that we have done our very best to achieve these goals and to focus our energy on achieving economic diversification throughout the community, promoting the importance of DEI and upward mobility, sustainable development, and also strengthening Garner's competitive advantage through the policy. I'm happy to take any questions. We've been working on this quite a while, but I hope if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stallings. Good presentation. Counsel, throw it out in general. Questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Mazzies.
Let's add a comment.
Okay.
And it's pretty much what I've said in the past, you know, we attempted and did a lot of this at county level years ago, and this will certainly give you a lot of tools to work with, and it'll make us even more competitive. I think this is a, good works and efforts were put into it. I think we've got a very workable plan that our team can go forward and be as competitive as anybody else. And just for me, I strongly support it and encourage my colleagues to jump on it, too. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Down here, Mr. Behringer.
I really appreciate this and your hard work, you and your team. I remember when we didn't have an incentive policy, the road that we went on to get here, and this is just, it's part of the rewards.
Anything?
Appreciate the work that's going into it. Ready to adopt it.
Great. Down here.
The only question is the reference in the actual document to Wake County living wage. You referenced an old number, so I guess my question is, is that living wage calculation going to be done with the most recent data at the time the application comes in? I know it's not pegged in here. I saw it in the presentation, it was 2015. Is the idea that it would be pegged whatever the living wage is calculated at the time?
That's right.
Okay.
So we would try, in the new policy recommendations, this is unique to Garner, of course, but we're trying to make sure our policy is in line with the counties.
Yep.
And so I know the county does their calculations, and so we would just follow that and use that for our benchmark.
Probably old news, but it seemed like it was $12 an amount that was, $12 an hour.
I believe it's $13.50 the last time I checked.
Okay. It's probably a three from...
It's going to be a moving target.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure, you know, because I have 13 from 2015, and, you know, cut it in Garner in 2025. So I just want to make sure that number is updated as the living conditions actually change as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I would say both, I appreciate all the hard work that the Economic Development Department has put into this whole incentive policy. And I would just say that if approved, it adds additional tools in the toolbox when it comes to economic development, and a long time coming, and have positive reviews for it.
Thanks, sir. Okay. Sounds like you're ready to move on this, so I'll entertain a motion regarding adoption of the updates to the policy. Go move.
Second.
Okay. Motion properly made and seconded. No other questions. Counsel, if you favor this motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, and there is none. So, well done, Mr. Stallings, and we'll see how soon we get this practice in use, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Let's see, Mr. Manager, is now the time we want to tack on the, I've got it as ARP. He's probably got a better name than that.
ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act. And so in talking to the finance director and the information that he had combed through, that's starting to come out, the town would need a resolution to accept the funds. So if he wanted to say anything additional about it in particular, but that's just going to allow us to officially accept the funds. We're a non-entitlement community, which means our funds are going to come funnelled through the state, and they've already created a American Rescue Plan. I forgot the formal name of it, but it's basically a commission or whatever, and that's going to help distribute the funds, and we'll get half of it at a time.
Okay. Be happy to hear from you, Mr. Beck.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Just a couple of comments to add to the manager's. We're starting to get some preliminary guidance from the Treasury Department on how these funds can be spent, and this guidance came from the state that we should probably, you know, formally have a resolution in place to accept the funds. So that's all this is, is just you all giving us the go-ahead to pursue the contract with the state to accept the funds when they're available. And then we'll come back with, you know, spending plan and budget and all that at a later date.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Beck or the town manager regarding this?
I've got one. And the guidance on how these funds that can be spent is, is a point where you guys can share that with us to things, you know, as we look at budget items or what we're trying to do or coming up with funds, how much of this can we use and what are the limitations on it?
Yeah. The guidance so far is still pretty high level. The guidance from the Treasury is preliminary. They'll have final regulations that'll come out later. So the guidance from the school of government so far is, really don't make any plans on how you want to spend it yet, wait for the final guidance. But it's, you know, there are general categories of water and sewer infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure, replacing lost revenues due to the pandemic, you know, assisting companies and businesses within your community that were impacted by the pandemic. You can partner with other agencies to pool funds or create grant opportunities or things like that. It's about five or six categories, you know, of allowable types of expenses and a good variety of things within those.
I think as the league publicized some information about a seminar or two that gives some basic guidance, I guess.
Yeah. The league has a microsite set up. They've put together some videos and a webinar recently since that initial guidance came out from Treasury. And so they put together a pre-contacting, contracting checklist, which is what we're going through with this resolution. So we prepared all the documents and submitted those to the state, and then they will send out contract documents at some point in the future, probably within the next 30 to 60 days. So this resolution authorizes the manager and your other appropriate staff to sign those contracts when they're available.
Any other questions for Mr. Beck? Everybody understand? Okay. So, go ahead.
Is there any, are there any special plans for grant tracking and administration? Or is it, you know, because this is like 10% of our annual budget, basically. I know with the bond, we're setting aside extra money. Is there a plan to have additional staffing to administer these funds or oversee them, or is it just seem that they'll go into existing programs and just flow through, or is it?
We haven't talked about any additional staffing to administer the funds. I think that's going to be dependent on what the use is. So if it stays more within the town coffers and town-led projects, there may not be a need for that. But if we do get into, to grant funding, grant opportunities, that may be another discussion at that point as to how this would be administered.
Do you know if any of the allocated funds include provisions for use of the funds for that type of administration?
I have not seen anything specific on that, but, but again, the full guidance will be more detailed than what we have so far.
One challenge in answering that, too, is the other thing that has not been fully fleshed out is what the reporting requirements are going to be.
Right.
So because we don't have a lot of detail on that yet, we can't then even make some assumptions about what we might need, much less what they're going to require.
Yeah. And that's what, I guess I just want to put that on our radar as far as administering the grant and tracking it and looking for sources of revenue. That may be the grant itself, maybe come from some other source if we decide we need to do something out of our normal operations to use those funds. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Beck. I believe a motion would be in order on this matter.
So move.
Suck it.
Okay. All right. All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no, and it is so ordered. Okay. Thank you all. All right. Let's see. Committee reports, I'm not aware of any. Anybody have any committee reports? None?
None.
Mr. Manager, we'll hear from you, sir.
All right. Mr. Mayor, Town Council, we have the, our standard reports we normally have in there to garner info, and the building permit data, and I had a couple of other things, handful of things to share with you that are not in your agenda packet. One is, last year, we applied for a bike ped grant, and unfortunately, we did not receive that. Well, another round of funding opportunity has come available, and so we wanted to see if the council was amenable to us applying for that. If you remember, it was an NCDOT grant that would cover 70%, and the town provided 30% match, and we estimate that the cost would be between $18,000 and $22,000. And that was to do some planning work. So just wanted to see if you were open to us doing that. We were going to use that to do some sidewalk prioritization and prepare a report for you to talk about and update our existing project list, which we thought would be timely, especially with the bond funds coming. So if you're open to us applying for that again.
Okay, counsel. Seems like a reasonable idea to me. Okay. Thumbs up on it. Okay.
All right. The other thing, you know, as part of Public Works Week, Public Works is doing a food drive that is going to benefit Community of Hope, and they're called it Fill the Truck. So they have a truck, a Public Works vehicle, that they're moving around from location to location. So just want to encourage the public to donate to a worthy cause, mainly food, pantry items, breakfast canned, breakfast items, canned vegetables, box items, and just non-perishable-type food items. Today, that was in the Kroger parking lot close to where Chick-fil-A is. Tomorrow, it'll be in Agri Supplies parking lot. And Thursday, it'll be at Avisboro Square. And Friday, the Lowe's Food parking lot. So as you see that move around, please donate to a worthy cause that our staff is spearheading. And we talked about during the budget, some of the revenue changes that we were recommending. One, we didn't, they were mainly development-related. There's one other, I'm sorry, not revenue, fee changes that were talked about during the budget discussions. There was one other that was not development-related that we just wanted to make you aware of, and we can tell you more about this later. The police, as you know, police officers during their time off official duty, they do work assignments, off-duty assignments, like security, basically like movie theaters, material facilities, recycling facilities, ball games, all different types of things. So there is a company that helps manage that. It's getting pretty popular around the country. They help with the scheduling, they help with the contact with the third-party company. The officers still remain our employee. They just help with the administration, the scheduling, and making sure the money gets paid. Well, with that, the fees will go up. It'll make it more efficient, but the fees will go up a little bit for what we charge per hour for a police officer off-duty. I don't have the numbers with me right now, but I just wanted to make you aware of that when you see it in the budget, fee schedule. And we can, I can forward you some information on that if you're interested in seeing what that looks like, so.
Questions on that? Anybody?
All right. Oh, yeah, I wasn't sure if council was going to bring that up, but I did send you some information pertaining to July 3, and what the, what the plan was prior to Friday, and what the plan could be. If a few things work out, we are prepared to make that a little bigger than we anticipated and get it closer to normal. Won't be exactly like it was, but it'll be still a grand event. And just to see if there were any, any questions about that. I presented like a couple of different scenarios of what that could look like.
Did you say, has that already been sent out or no?
Yes, it got sent out this afternoon, so it's possible you had not seen it yet, but I can go through it. Should be in your, in your emails.
As I recall, that plan, option B, was just pretty much like we've always done it for the most part, including symphony bands.
It was pretty close. Here we go. So, yeah, so what we had proposed before was basically, before the COVID restrictions were relaxed, it would be a vehicle-based event, and we would have cars parked in our three large areas. The areas that we typically, the two areas that we typically park in, the fields, plus we would park cars in what would have been the spectator, big spectator field. We would limit that to about 1,000 vehicles. The spectators would primarily stay... The spectators would primarily stay either in their car, but they would be allowed to stay, stand outside near their vehicles, but not so much wander around. We would accommodate walk-up spectators near the Veterans Memorial, because we know that's going to happen. The music would be broadcast through an FM frequency, and each vehicle can tune into that to listen to the music. And that would have been a mixture of music during the event that would turn into patriotic tunes as the fireworks begin to play, I mean, begin to fire. Now, that plan did not include the symphony, the band that's typically on the second stage, a kids' zone, any shuttling of spectators from an off-site location, or vendors, food vendors. But it did, of course, include a fireworks show. And that, had we done that, it would be starting at seven o'clock and go until the fireworks are finished. So roughly, I don't know, ten, nine forty-five, ten o'clock, somewhere in there. So that was the plan. But as things relaxed on Friday and the opening up of the crowd, the crowd limit and the mask regulations, we began to think about what could we add to the event to make it more like it has been. So then we would go more toward the traditional focus, which would be park cars in the two large fields and still reserve the middle area for spectators. They would be on blankets and chairs, just like normal. We would have the town stage with the band playing different music shortly after the park opens. There's an opportunity, we believe, to get the symphony on the large stage area, just like we have in the past. And we feel like if we're going to have a large crowd, especially in the field there, that we would probably want to have vendors. And good opportunity for some vendors and nonprofits to make some revenue, especially with COVID and things being a little slow for them. Now, this plan does not include a large inflatable kids' zone. We could still have some activities for kids, but did not think it was feasible at this time to bring in the large inflatables and have that going on. We are able to use South Garner High School for parking and would be able to shuttle in spectators. Per the guidelines, the governor and the Health and Human Services requested that anyone riding, you know, public transportation, bus transit, and those type of things still wear masks. So even though they're privately chartered, and we're a public agency, we thought it would be feasible for us to require riders to wear a mask. There would be a fireworks show. And if we do this, it would be, gates would open at five, which is similar to what it has done before. And we would go until fireworks were complete. So with that, can't promise you that we're going to make all of that happen in a short amount of time. We have started making contacts and some commitments, and we feel like we can make this come together. But there's a possibility that some things may not work out exactly the way we planned. But we do know that the symphony is available, but we still got to work out a contract with them. So things like that, and we would have to pull in the vendors and those type of things. So with that.
I think one thing that we wanted to make sure Council's comfortable with is we'd have to know pretty soon if there's any reservations about hosting an assembly with that many people. And then also, sort of a sub thing, as Rodney mentioned, if we're going to add the shuttles to it, then we're also facilitating another situation in where people might be put into a, you know, a smaller, more confined area where masks might be required. So those, we felt like were two of the things that we really need to understand Council's input on. We are having to make some commitments pretty immediately to make sure some of these things happen. So if there's any reservations about us moving forward with that. With as much of that bigger plan as we can, we just need to know that before we have staff making commitments and negotiating contracts.
What I think that's the main caveat is, you know, do we want to go ahead and go with, something gets big so soon after COVID? If you believe, I guess, health experts, and we're in good shape, and we're not likely to, shall I say, backslide or deviate, full speed ahead. If there are concerns about that, could go back to, what was it, Plan B, where we'd just have the fireworks?
Yeah, I mean, COVID is still around, so we don't want to misrepresent that. The risk is less than it was a few months ago, but, I mean, it is still around. Things are starting to open up, more people are vaccinated. They're just opening it up for kids to be vaccinated, but I'm sure there will be a number of kids that are not vaccinated. So, but, so many other things are opening up. I mean, arenas and sporting events and those type of things. And I think in another month, it'll be even more open. And as things open, I think there's going to be an expectation from the public that we do something pretty nice, especially since we skipped last year. So, and I think an expectation from some of the council members too, probably.
Mr. Mayor, there's a clarification in some of the guidance that the governor's office has made recently. And that is, one, only about half people are vaccinated right now. That number will continue to go up. But one of the key pieces of that guidance was that people that were, people took the mask part and said, if you're fully vaccinated, then you don't need to social distance indoors or outdoors. It was very explicit, though, it said if people are not vaccinated, that they need to wear a mask indoors and that they need to continue to socially distance if they're outside. So, and in all the changes that have happened, there's still guidance that's sort of getting ignored. And so I think when it comes to July 4th, the thinking needs to be to encourage distancing. And not necessarily cars, but encourage people to not be on top of each other when they're sitting on their blankets. If they're in line for vendors, stay distant. Because there are, like I said, that's the overlooked part of the guidance is that. And there are unvaccinated people out there who make their choice. But there's also, based on what the science also said, the reason vaccinated people are more safe is, one, they're protected. But they also, if they are infected, have a lower load and are not as contagious. So that is a double benefit to being vaccinated. That said, if you have an asymptomatic person who's not vaccinated, they're transmitting their virus out at a higher rate than vaccinated people. So my only caution is that I want a bigger event than what we originally had planned for sure. But I think we still need to have distancing as part of how we structure some of the stationary aspects of the event. So people walking on the sidewalk, they're walking on the sidewalk, we can't really manage that. But as far as placement of people at the event, I think that is something we still have a little bit of control over. Because masks are not really, you can't ask or investigate. So we want to, distancing is sort of the only thing that we can really control. So that's my input on it. I'm excited for more fireworks and a big event, but.
Be in on that?
I do.
Time's up.
I do.
I do.
I do, I do, I do.
I do, I do.
Go ahead, Mr..
Things are turning around.
They are, and there's a common sense factor, you know. When we put this event on, it's easy to, on anything, when we put signs up, if you've not had your shots, what have we encouraged you to wear a mask. It's common sense stuff. But this state and our town and our county has been cooped up long enough. I really highly recommend we go with this Plan B, get started on it tomorrow so we can get everything we need. Let's have a great event and let people make wise decisions. And because regardless where we have it or not, there's going to be people that's not going to make wise decisions. But out there in a public arena like that, it's spread out, it's always has been, for the most part. And I think people have got good common sense. And let's have a great 3rd of July celebrations, is what I like to do.
Thank you, Kathy.
Therein lies the question, do people have common sense?
I can't speak for everybody.
That disturbs me.
Yeah, let me go ahead and cut Mr. Singleton.
Let him finish his shift, let him finish his go.
Oh, okay, excuse me.
Do what? No, I just, I would love to see us get back to as close to normal as possible. And I'll go with what the majority of the council decides. But it concerns me because when people get in a crowd, people do what they want to do. And so I'd like to know more about, like, if we're going to make them be socially distant, how are we going to do that? You can't do that.
We're not, we're not going to be able to do that once we get the people on the field.
This is what I'm saying.
Don't say you can't, say how do we do it? And if one of the answers is, well, there are designated spots. This is where you can put, and there could be variations and all that. But people piled on top of each other for two or three hours is a bad idea. And again, even if, every foot matters, it makes a difference. And if you designate some spots, it might decrease our capacity by twenty-five percent of people who can actually get onto the field. But we, this is still a thing, the COVID's still here. We can't, we can't just throw our hands up and say it's over.
We'll be able to control somewhat how many cars come into the park. But like, once the spots are filled, it's going to be difficult to control how many pedestrians come into the park from all the different.
How will you handle people being angry who don't get to get in?
You don't really want to go there.
Control the perimeter of the park and all the different outlets.
I don't think it's a perfect scenario. We approach it to the best we can and encourage people, you know, spread out, wear a mask if you hadn't had your shots. That's all you can do and promote it. That's what everybody else is doing.
One way of controlling the crowd would be not offer the shuttles. You eliminate two things. You eliminate the number of people and you eliminate the garner supporting, putting people in a confined space. So that's one way. Now, by doing that, you're going to limit about, to about seven hundred cars parked in the park. If you average three to four people per car, you're going to, you're going to have all the expense of the big event with about a third the number of people there. But it's, it's one delineation point that we do have control over. And then people may choose to walk up. But it's, unfortunately, it's a big delineation because it cuts it, you know, it cuts it dramatically, but it is one consideration.
We should also do a vaccination site same day at the park. If you're going to have all those, if you're going to have all those people there. If you're going to have a vaccination tent, voluntary if you want to.
Now, I could, now, we might could do a vaccination signup appointment.
Sign up maybe, but not, not in the park.
The conversation, promise to recognize him.
Remember, there were twelve thousand-plus people in DNC arena last night. So, you know, we're going to be on the outside, not on the inside. I think people need to realize, and this is because of the common sense. Now that they keep changing the numbers, but they said thirty-six percent of North Carolina have two shots, fifty-one percent have one shot. These numbers are not going to change dramatically. They're not.
Probably not.
People who are not going to get the shot are not going to get the shot. They're just not. Yeah, thirty-six might get to forty, and I don't know if it'll ever see fifty percent. It's your angle, see sixty-six percent like the governor thought it was. I don't know if we'll get people with one shot to get that far. The further you go east, I'm sorry, that just, I don't care. It's just not, that's just the way it is. It's different, it's more rural, they're more spread out. So I like, I appreciate you coming back with, you know, Plan B. There'll be other ones on where there'll be, you know, they're having concerts at Walnut Creek. They're having, they're probably, the Red Hat Amphitheater are selling tickets. There's five thousand people there, and they're sitting on top of one another. So, you know, that's outside. Walnut Creek is outside of the roof of a part of it. So I appreciate y'all putting this together. And I think one of the keys, you've got to put signage up, but make sure that you have the hand washing stations that we can get twice as many as we normally have. I think that's important to make sure at least they're there and hand sanitation, hand sanitizer, sanitation, soap, water, whatever. Combination of those, as many of those as possible, because that's still one of the things that, you know, surface touching, they say, is not as bad as I think it was originally thought. But if you surface touch or get close to somebody and put your finger in your mouth, there you go. So just give them the opportunity, you know.
Give away masks, you know, free masks if somebody wants.
Well, I think if you're going to do the shuttle, that's one thing you're going to have to do is have masks on the shuttle because half the people aren't going to have their mask. I was at the bank last week, two young men walked in, and they said, you got to have a mask. And they said, we don't have a mask. And they went and got them, some getting to, at some convenience stores, at some stores you run, they won't let people in. That's very rare, let me assure you. Because I'm in and out of convenience stores every day, and most people don't have a mask on.
You're right. If you could provide masks for the van wearers if you needed to. Let me get Mr. Vance in on the conversation.
Anyway, I appreciate staff working on this and being open to making some changes.
Anything, Mr. Vance?
Yep, to echo what has been said here, all the way around the table, there is a level of anxiety and really trying to figure out what to do. I'm happy to have, be able to have a freedom, honestly, to be able to not, not wear the mask. And with things moving towards a normal, a new normal, I would say. Precaution is necessary. And what does that look like? I'd say, going back to common sense with things. And, and the question becomes, how do you control it? And I don't see how you do. Relative to the 4th of July event with the large, and because you're going to leave a lot of people out, and that's going to cause, in my opinion, more trouble than is necessary. And I'm leaning, I am, I am in favor of what has been proposed for number, for B, for Plan B, with opening up and moving back to the traditional way of having our 4th of July celebration. Because we didn't really get clear guidance from, from the, from the higher levels as relative to masks. They, one day it resolves off, and those go, okay. And then next, we have the follow-on guidance coming, coming there, which tells me that you have to use common sense in moving forward. That that's just where we are now, in my opinion.
Okay, Council, we obviously have some other items to attend to. But have you had your say on this enough that you're ready to give Council some guidance on this?
One more, one more comment.
All right. Quickly.
And that is, what we need to do is pay attention to the numbers and the data. We are a month and a half away from it. This order changed three days ago. And what we need to keep an eye on is the number of infection rates and hospitalizations and see what happens. Yeah, there were all these people at PNC, people don't drop dead from COVID twenty-four hours after they get it. There's a window of time. So we're going to see over the next few weeks the impact, if any, of this change. And so we need to be cognizant of that and aware that this thing, we've been here long enough to know this thing changes on a dime. And I know we all are happy that it's changed, and I can take my mask off in here because I'm fully vaccinated. I'll go to 4th of July and do whatever I want. I'm not worried about me. So I just want everyone to keep in mind that this thing can still change on a dime. And as long as, if we do as close to normal, but with caution, we'll be, we'll set ourselves up for less failure than just going all out. That's my final comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Let's go to B, because they need, they're on a timeline here.
That's what I'm saying, we can plan for something big, but don't plan, you plan for the full out, normal is normal. You're looking for trouble if they change those guidelines on us again.
Anything could happen at any time, but.
That was one thing we had mentioned, but that will reduce the crowd, so.
Makes me nervous.
It brings more people from further out.
Yeah.
Less Garner, Garner people.
Well, also remember that July 3rd, 4th weekend is on a weekend this year, and you're going to have a lot of people. I mean, they're expecting, I read a couple of news articles, they've been down east, they're expecting the beach season to be incredible. Their rentals are going crazy, they're filling out left and right. And they're talking mainly about the Crystal Coast, but they, rentals are just, better get a spot while you can.
If we do eliminate the shuttles, again, we probably, only about twenty-five percent of the people that usually come to this come via car. I can't tell you about how many walk there, which there are a fair number. But I think that's the biggest give and take, is I think we eliminate some burden by eliminating the shuttle. But I think if you do that, Council would be, need to be satisfied that you're automatically going to change the number of attendees. And there's, just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with that. If you, if we choose to eliminate the shuttles, what it would do to your crowd size. I think it would still provide a great event for all those who get there, but it may cause more people to get in cars to try to get there. We'll control that at the traffic stops as best we can, but that's one. It'll release one burden because we won't close Buffalo Road, so we'll have more ways out that night. It'll potentially increase challenges a little bit because we may have more people to turn away that try to get there in a vehicle. to turn away that try to get there in a vehicle if there's not, um, a shuttle. So that's what, that's one of the things staff's been struggling with all week, um, is to which, which way to go there.
I'll weigh in on that quickly. I, I think it would be reasonable, at least, given the status that we're in right now, uh, and it's some still uncertainty to, to, to just, um, eliminate the shuttle for this first restart and see where we go from there.
I'd agree with that.
There, there will be a number of people walking there.
I disagree.
All right.
They're up in the subway from New York City, folks, and we're worried about a shuttle on July 3rd, come on now. They're hoping to shuttle up the subway up in New York City and in DC.
I mean, it's a good idea.
Right.
I mean, it's a bad idea either. I mean, it's like, you talk about people jumping on, other one, most of them are family members, so they're around one another, and they're friends, who they're around anyway.
Yeah, but you open up down there, you got people coming from further out to get to just that spot, to come into Garner, where they're coming from, who knows where, Jersey County, who knows where they're coming from, to come to Garner, into Garner.
And the rural counties who have less cases, the numbers all bear it out. I'm just saying, it's, it's the fact.
It also less vaccinated.
So they could be asymptomatic and be carrying, and you would never know.
They can, most of the whole time, though, they have, that's almost as much percentage.
I mean, I, I'm against the shuttles, I think it, it.
Yeah, I don't want.
Well, okay.
The people getting on there, none of them getting on the shuttle. You tell them they have to wear a mask, they have to wear the mask, rather than the shuttle.
And if they don't wear a mask, what do you do? I was in a meeting the other day, somebody sat in the meeting, told me, didn't wear a mask and a group of other people, and said, I'm not vaccinated, I just sat there.
Well, as soon as I'm vaccinated, he's like, well, get the vaccines, 19, and that's his decision, that's fine and nandy. You know?
No, it's not.
Well, I, I think we can all agree, it's, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's, as much as we want it to be normal, i- it's not gonna be, because we're just coming out of probably the worst pandemic we've ever had. So, you know, there's arguments to be made on both sides of the issue. Um, I, I sense there may not be, uh, uh, a full unanimous, but, uh, you know, we'd need to give the staff some direction, um, so, uh, if you feel like you know which way you want to go on this, we can certainly take a vote and we'll go from there. So, um, Mr. Manager, well, go ahead, do you, do you have one other thing?
Oh, well, I was just gonna say, I mean, I, it sounds like there's more consensus not to have the shuttle, and maybe it's just a compromise as we ramp back up to eliminate that, and, um, and then next year we'll be able to go full out. That's, think what I'm hearing, but.
Yeah, I think.
Well, well, I mean, we can, we can, we can take a vote on it to ensure, you want to do that, counsel?
You can alter how you do the shuttle. They don't seat in every seat, every other seat's blocked off, and you have a cutoff time, if they're not by there a certain time, sorry, that's it. And you can make the shuttle work, they're running, go triangle bus in Garner every day, true, they're not full, but.
Well, yeah, but those, that's not a whole bunch of people going to a designated location, that is a few people on a bus going to various locations. So you've got a different dynamic going on there.
Just make them wear a mask. If you don't wear a mask, you don't get on.
Make them is the operative phrase. Try making them.
Okay, counsel, let's, uh, you know, hey, I think it's reasonable to take a vote on this and, uh, see, see where we come up. So, uh, uh, I will suggest that, uh, the issue before you is, uh, am I missing anything before we vote?
No.
Okay. I mean, you've heard the proposal, the main issue is whether or not, uh, the, uh, the one difference or one of the major shifts would be, we would not offer a shuttle service this year. If you, if you favor that, um, and then we'll vote on if you offer it. So if you favor not offering the shuttle this year, uh, vote aye.
Not offering it?
Yeah.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. So, that assumes, I guess, but let's vote, the, for those of you who favor having the event and offering the shuttle service as we have in the past, vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I believe the majority votes aye on the, on the shuttle.
And again, you can modify the shuttle, I didn't, don't get to cram everybody in there, you could put a half the people in there. And again, have a cutoff time, if you want to.
Yeah.
You know, you're not, you're not, I mean, usually the shuttle's taking people, but you're 9:30 or 9:00 or 9:30 till the fireworks go. Have a cutoff time and say, sorry.
Well, it's a capacity, just a quick, capacity of those shuttles, are they about 25 or 30 people or more than that?
Uh, probably, it's more than that, because it's like, it's, it's a coach bus, so it's, it's a good amount of.
You can pack them in there, sit them next to each other, sit there for 20 minutes, let it load up, there you go.
All right, you guys have your, uh, directions there for now?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna be big.
All right. Uh, we are at, uh, Ms. Attorney, do you have any report tonight?
No, I do not.
And again, I want to thank you for your assistance with a lot of these things, and particularly for tonight's meeting and the information you shared there. Uh, council reports, uh, I'll start with, uh, my friend on the left, Mr. Singleton.
Yes, uh, Mr. Brown, I want to thank staff for getting back to us on July 3rd. I also want to thank, uh, staff, Rodney sent us an email, uh, about 5:57 tonight, as I had, because of some of the, uh, ransomware issues recently, I just was curious about our IT, IT audit and so forth, and I appreciate the detailed response and the information he gave us. And, uh, they got it on schedule for 2023, and certainly getting the new equipment in sounds like a smart way to do, and then make sure it's covered. So I appreciate you getting back and glad you got a plan in place. Thank you, that's all.
Okay, Ms. Behringer?
Nothing, sir. I know that's a surprise, but nothing.
Oh, okay, Mr. Matthews?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger, Mr. Vance?
Also, not tonight.
Okay, yeah. All right, and the mayor wants to mention just a couple of things. Um, uh, the police had a nice ceremony on Saturday, uh, it was, uh, somewhat in recognition, obviously, of Law Enforcement Officers Day. Uh, had a chance to go over and read the proclamation, and they promoted several people and, uh, also introduced some of the new people they hired, so a nice event. Uh, Small Business Week, uh, Mr. Stalling sitting out there had some ideas on that this year, I hope all the council members had some opportunity to don your green t-shirt and.
Oh, yes.
And go out there and meet some of these folks, uh, I thought that was a, was a good event, sure enough. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Manager and Assistant Manager or others, um, do we want to, uh, touch on this issue, maybe it won't be so contentious, I don't know, as to whether or not, given, uh, some of the changes in the, in the, again, the governor's orders that we've been trying to follow, do we want to loosen the seating requirements that we have in this chamber? Um, we've certainly, I think, diminished the capacity of it significantly. I'm not suggesting we necessarily go to full capacity, but, but that's something you and I've talked a little bit about. Um, we, we can ask council if they want to weigh in on that issue, if it doesn't take us too long to do it. Um, council, um, give you an opportunity, um, or do you want to make a comment about it first, or?
Oh, no, I mean, we're just continue to follow the governor's guidelines as our reference, um, in here, I mean, we can loosen up the seats if we want, I mean, we, we don't typically get huge crowds in the council meetings, so we can leave it like it is for now and just do it as a, as needed basis, uh, when we have large, and that would, you know, encourage more social distancing, uh, until we get to larger crowds, and then we can just release as many seats as we need, so that's one way to.
I know there were some people standing in the back that, but maybe they just didn't see seats up front or whatever, but, uh, okay, um.
But, I mean, that's one way to handle it.
Who wants to weigh in on that, uh, sort of quickly? I'm not sure what the current capacity is, but like you said, most of the time it's not a problem, unless, yeah, about 25 now, the way we're set up. Okay.
You're saying go and double to 50, is that what you just said?
No, I'm saying just leave it, and then if we know we got a large crowd, just take them loose and make more seats available.
Make, make more room.
As needed, and that's one way to help with social distancing.
Okay.
If we are doing it only when we know we've got a larger crowd, we really haven't accomplished anything, really.
I have a comment.
Well, some of the ones.
It's still dangerous.
Yeah.
I mean, it's still, if we're having this debate right now about how to, whether or not we're gonna expand this, well, just take them all up and expect it. I mean, no, but if that's the.
I just knew that there was some concern from council, so I just was trying to offer a, a midpoint.
Sure. Um, I appreciate the manager bringing it up, we discussed it, uh, we, we're trying to give counsel an opportunity to, uh, let their wishes and preferences be known, so that's, that, that's the idea here. Um, we don't have to resolve that tonight, uh, but, uh.
We can take them all off and still encourage spacing.
Sure.
As needed, but, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I don't sense there's a sentiment to, 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 to change that based on what I'm hearing here, we'll leave it as is for now, and revisit it, uh, in a month or two perhaps.
It was not, no, I think we're gonna take them off.
Oh, are you?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just encourage folks to spread out and then just.
All right. Counsel, satisfied with that, anybody? Okay, um, that was, I believe, the only other item that I had, so.
Mr. Mayor, I thought you were gonna also discuss whether you want to continue to allow people to participate remotely, the public to participate remotely in these meetings?
Yes. Thank you for reminding me, yeah, that, that's another issue. Um, obviously, since, I guess, uh, when we were doing, uh, our remote meetings and so forth, there were, uh, more people who were participating and, I guess, making comments. Uh, I think I'm looking at Ms. Gibson back there, there have been, um, some decline or maybe a steady decline of the number of people who are contacting you for the directions and saying, I want to speak to the council remotely. Is that a fair statement or not?
That's a fair statement, I think, the number of people.
Right.
Always just good.
Okay. So, um, I could certainly support the idea of, uh, you know, uh, I, I think many people probably prefer to come in person, I mean, just because a couple of people said that tonight, it's nice to be back in person and so forth. Um, but, uh, that goes from everything, I guess, uh, Mr. Manager, from, from people who are coming to make, uh, comments, uh, petitions, but also, does that relate to those who are coming in as developers and applicants and so forth, uh, some of.
I think virtual, regardless of pandemic or not, I mean, is gonna be part of a new trend.
Yeah.
For just the way we do business, I mean, you're always probably gonna have people away, I mean, I might have staff that are teleworking or whatever, so.
Well, if you're, if we're gonna allow developers to attend remotely, we need to allow the citizens to attend remotely.
Well, I think that's a good point, yeah.
That's, that is, you know, that's just fair.
Yep, okay, I think, I think, I think that point is made. Um, all right, I don't sense any, uh, particular interest in, uh, changing that policy. I assume the logistics of doing that is, uh, you know, you're used to it, it's not unduly complicated, and, um, seems obvious to me that, uh, s- certain staff, or maybe many staff, prefer to attend our meetings that way, make presentations that way. Is that a fair statement?
It's, it's a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And we do have one contractor staff member that is remote, so.
Yeah, okay.
Right now.
All right.
Lots of options for that.
Okay. Um, counsel, if you're ready, uh, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session, uh, the one site is there having to do with, uh, real estate acquisition, um, general statutes, section 143, 318 dash 11A5, and we're adding to that, uh, one other item under economic development, and, Mr. Attorney, could you give us that site?
A4.
Okay, the same site except A4.
So moved.
All right, thank you.
Seconded.
All right. Seconded, uh, motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, it's approved, so, um, I'll declare that we are going into closed session.
Okay, the council is back in open session having gone into closed session to discuss a couple of items. One having to do with real estate that we had some discussion with our attorney on and council and attorney agreed on a plan course of action in regards to that matter. The other issue was having to do with economic development. We heard a report from our economic development director and discussed some of the ramifications of that and gave some direction to him regarding consideration for how things might proceed with some expectation that we will hear back from that at a future date. With that, council, I believe that covers all of our agenda items and any other business, so I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
If you have moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council, for your time. I declare that we adjourn.